Okay, thank you for your patience. This is the Tuesday, April 27, 2021, City Council meeting. Would you get everyone, please mute your phones so we don't get a bunch of static. None of us want to hear. That would be appreciated and the folks at home as well. Okay. Let's move on and roll call, please.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
And Councilmember DeLing?
Yes.
Okay. Dick, you want to lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Before we move on with the actual meeting, I just want to let everybody know most of you are here for items E and F, which is towards the end of the meeting.
There's no audio here. Muted.
There you go.
Okay. So it's not a public meeting, so we're not going to have any public or a public, yeah, excuse me.
I can hear it.
That's why we have Abby here is to correct me. So it's not a public hearing, so we're not going to have any public
Testimony.
testimony going on. We have gotten all the emails. We've gotten all the phone calls. We know where you folks stand. So to have everybody get up and say the same thing that you've already said is... So anyway, we'll move on. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? I have one. Item A on the consent calendar. Approval of April 13, 2021, city council meeting minutes. We're going to pull that off the agenda. Any other corrections, additions? Okay, hearing none. Excuse me. I'll read the consent calendar, which is incredibly short this time. I don't think I've ever seen one.
I'm getting feedback that we are muted still, so I'm not sure why that is the case.
But other people said they could hear you, right? Huh? Other people have said they can hear you, right?
Can you hear?
Sandy could, but then she said that we're now muted, so I'm not sure what...
It appears that some other audio is cut out.
Unmuted.
Okay, it should work now. We should be...
Okay. So back to the consent calendar. Item B, approval to appoint Rhonda Bedvarson to the Historic Preservation Commission. Item C, approval of amendment number one, Welch Comer Contract for Fourth and Honeysuckle Design. And item D, bills for payment. Any comments or motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar as stated with the deletion of item 1A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLing?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is visitor public comments on non-agenda items. So... So if it's on the agenda, no. If it's got something else to bring up, please.
I have to do this before.
Do you want...
I had two. I had two people that had told me that they would like to provide public comment virtually. Tina Busby?
That was her, so I'll unmute her.
Thank you.
Okay. Tina Busby, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, do you have...
But you're not on the video. The audio is still not working there, so I'm watching you on video.
Okay.
And talking with feedback on the phone.
That's her. Yeah, that's...
Okay. Anyway, this is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. So do you have comment on a non-agenda item?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
This is having to do with development as a whole and the mindset of our city government and the frustrations that it's causing the citizens. This council has become increasingly deaf to the actual residents of Hayden. More often than not, it seems that making a public statement at a council meeting, which is not easy, even if it did have an impact, amounts to therapy. More often than not, it seems like you guys have made your decisions before we ever speak. Regardless, I'm an event and voice my position here. I am always a planner, but sometimes things come up that scream abort the plan or at least stall the plan. 2020 was one such event, and our problems are not eased by the totalitarian regime now at the federal level. And as you can tell by your 15-person, I understand, attendance, we still don't have representation. Yes, I'm speaking, but I can't speak about the agenda. Furthermore, throughout this pandemic, people are hindered from being represented, and this is problematic because it seems our city government is moving on as if nothing is going on. If you look out there and you see 15 people in your audience, you can tell. We are not properly represented. We have a bunch of people that are in the category of caution and cannot be out in the general public. Unfortunately, that same public has a large population of non-tech savvy people that can't partake in a virtual meeting. Furthermore, those are the same people that aren't going to show up if they somehow get reserved spots, which I don't know how that's possible. I didn't see any way of reserving a spot to come in person, which would make me feel like I'm actually being heard because I, you know, I don't even see a face. Everybody's looking down. But I digress. So pretending that COVID is not currently impacting our operations is naive. I saw no public announcement that there was going to be a limit of 15. I only heard via email, and when I responded to ask if I was going to still be able to make a public statement, I didn't get a response, and I got sent a voicemail when I called. I don't call that a representative government. As everybody knows, we have quite the influx of people coming from mostly California, and I don't believe that even with this massive plan that nobody, at least in my capacity, has the ability to read. It's in excess of 1,000 pages worth of reading when you calculate all of the different things in this Imagine Hayden plan. How are we supposed to be representative if our representatives aren't representing our wishes? I can guarantee you, as a person on a fixed income who is disabled, that I represent a decent portion of the population with the disabled, the low income, and the people on fixed incomes with social security. I don't believe, and I see nothing in the notes, that shows actual funding. Now, I do see some increased fees, but I'm not seeing a cause and effect and how all this alleged growth is being paid for. I only see an occasion after an occasion of why I need to find a way to get to city council meetings so I can be heard. But then we run into things like this where we're only allowing 15, and I'm not one of those chosen ones. So how am I supposed to get there? Furthermore, I do babysit my grandchildren part-time. But the point is, is we're constantly being asked to absorb more, whether it be in fees, massive sewer amounts that actually do put a hindrance on my ability to put food on the table. And then couple that with the additional property insurance hazards that are caused by my city government moving forward as if everything is all kosher. But that's not cool, especially when you consider that we have a whole new population of people that have been hindered economically besides people like myself who are hindered 24/7 because people lost their jobs because of Governor Little's shutdown in our counties and state cities, et cetera, all going along with the plan. Even now, we're being impacted just by looking at, which I can't see, but I was told there's 15 people there, so I'll just trust that. And I did see one, so... But that's just cutting into my time. The point is, is something really significant is going on, and we can't ignore that and move forward with all of these improvements, and we haven't got the financing taken care of or we're expecting the existing population to pay for it through taxes. I don't know. There's just not communication on how we're going to actually take care of all these things you guys continue to move forward on as if COVID is not impacting our community. The Al Cafe is closed. They're not the only one. I don't know how much time I have left, but I do want to say kudos from an article I read where one of our representatives, which was City Councilman Matthew, I think was his first name, anyway, spoke to the press and asked about how are we going to finance this, that it would be wrong to make the people that live here now pay for these people that intend to come here. And that is darn straight. Most of the people coming from California actually have more expendable money because it goes a lot further than our money does because we've lived here all along. I feel like I'm being pushed out of my own city, and I just want you to hear me as I say that.
Okay, thank you, Tina. We do have to move on now because we got other folks that want to speak. So thank you for your input.
Mayor or President?
Thank you.
May I make just a quick point with her?
Sure.
Can we put her back on?
Hang on, Tina.
This is Councilmember Matt Roder. I remember a few months ago that our city administrator, Brett Boyer, you met with him, and I was on the phone, and I think it was about an hour meeting. And I do appreciate you coming in, and we did listen. I wanted to let you know that, you know, there was time spent with you, and we do listen, and that's the point I'd like to make.
Thanks, Matt.
The other name that I had that had identified that she would like to participate virtually, I'm not sure if she still wanted to provide public comment, was Francine.
Francine, are you there?
You are on and need to unmute. Push star six.
Francine, are you there?
This is like bingo.
I... I-
One named Francine.
Unless it's a caller number.
Doesn't sound like she's there. Francine, are you there? Feel like the commercial, can you hear me now? Okay, well.
And then I haven't received any in-person comment forms.
Okay, well, let's move-
Excuse me, but this isn't Francine, but I did request to also speak virtually probably about three hours ago. I didn't get a reply, but I did say I was going to be attending virtually.
Okay, could you give us your name, please?
Absolutely. My name is Stacy Kilon.
Okay. And Stacy, you get five minutes because we have other folks who want to talk and stuff. And this is on non-agenda items.
Absolutely. And it's actually Casey.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I've lived in the Hayden- You're fine. Very common.
My wife says I'm hard of hearing too.
I've lived in the Hayden and Coeur d'Alene area for the last 24 years. I grew up in the Silver Valley where my family has lived for many generations, but I got to be an every-other-weekend resident of Coeur d'Alene while growing up due to my dad living here. I am very saddened and disappointed that the Hayden and Coeur d'Alene area I grew up in no longer exists. Over the last 24 years, I have been impacted by the exponential growth in our area in many ways. I am very concerned about the growth and density of development in Hayden. Traffic. Regarding traffic, I commute downtown for work and have had my commute increase greatly in just over a few years. It is increasingly frustrating to try to use Government Way in Hayden as it is always very backed up. The stopway to Honeysuckle and Government Way going south is probably the worst area to be extremely backed up. I can watch that thing cycle three or four times before getting through it. In addition, it is very hard to cross Government Way coming from the east most of the time. I'm sorry, from the west most of the time. North Hayden in the areas of Miles and Lacy now require a long wait time to cross Government Way, and that did not used to be the case. Having only one lane each way through the city of Hayden on Government Way rather than two lanes each way like Coeur d'Alene has increases congestion exponentially. Schools. Regarding schools, I taught in the Coeur d'Alene School District from 2005 until 2015. During that time, we were greatly impacted by the growth and had overcrowded classrooms on a regular basis. Honestly, the one thing helping the overcrowding in the schools is that a lot of the juniors and seniors are coming to North Idaho College to do their classes as dual-credit students. Try teaching technology classes in the classroom with 28 computers and 33 students. Doesn't work. My own children have also attended school in the areas and have had to attend classes in portable classrooms when there wasn't enough room inside the building. Recreational areas. Regarding recreational areas such as Hayden Lake and hiking areas, they are now extremely overcrowded and it's very hard to get a parking spot on Honeysuckle Beach. Utilities. Since moving to Hayden, I've had my utility bill, specifically sewer, increased quite a bit. I've been told that this is in part due to a lawsuit between the city of Hayden and the contractor and it seems like we are paying the price. Property taxes. Regarding property tax values and property taxes, there was an unfortunate article that came out today entitled, "Lakeside Idaho City Is America's Hottest Housing Market." Local realtors are making the case for people to come to our area for a more rural and less expensive place to live since more are working remotely. The more of these people that come in, the higher our house values go and our property taxes follow. I would like you to consider taking the steps to grandfather those of us who have had our houses before this influx of growth to stay at the same property tax rate until we sell our house. Pretty soon, the property taxes are going to be too expensive for those of us who have lived here all of our lives. It's extremely sad that most of our children who grew up here their whole lives can't now afford to either rent or purchase a home in our beloved town. I would like to see your votes and decisions reflect concern for those who live here now instead of planning how to pack a ton of new people into our community. I don't like the way the city is planning to grow for all those who are going to come. Those, who says we have to plan for dense housing? Why can't you plan for less dense, more open space development? I don't want to see the people who have lived here for years have to pay for the incoming people in any way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well said, ma'am.
Okay.
And there was no other one but-
Ed, did you? Non-agenda, right?
Non-agenda.
Okay, thanks.
On. Let me get my timer here so I don't feel like I'm going to talk so fast people can hear.
Okay, good. I don't have a timer, so.
I've kind of learned that also. All right, I'll be running. Let's get this thing going. Ed Dupree, State 8116, North Stonehaven Drive in Hayden. Good evening. Don't worry. I'm not going to speak about anything on the agenda this evening. I am going to speak in generalities as best that I can about the response of a large number of people to the growth issues that involve the smart growth model as related to the Hayden Comprehensive Plan. What occurred recently is about density, its response to density. The people who did not even know about the open houses, workshops, or even that Hayden was developing a comprehensive plan are beginning to see what the smart growth model will bring to Hayden and the area as a whole. They are starting to see that the comprehensive plan is facilitating dense development that is cumulatively, hey, I got it out, going to bring so much traffic, crowding schools, public places, stresses on the infrastructure, sewer, water, solid ways, we all, the list goes on, okay? They are starting to see that. In contrast, we have a very common comment that was reported at the open houses and workshops and on the public input comments where people said, "Keep the small-town feel." Okay? In reality, the smart growth model is and will continue to bring an ever-larger-town feel. Did you see the Coeur d'Alene Press on Monday? As I saw while attending the Post Falls Council meeting last week, that the Post Falls Council is starting to recognize that maybe the smart growth model that they adopted isn't all that it was expected to be. The Post Falls Mayor and some council members commented in the meeting and have since in the newspaper that some aspects of smart growth model and plan need to be revisited. I've spoken to a Post Falls Council member and I've heard similar comments that we were really excited by the plan. We were sold something that is turning out to be not what it was supposed to be. As is happening probably in probably an hour or so over in Post Falls and more will probably continue to happen, the Foxtail Development, which is a large development as part of the 1,000 acres that that company is going to pound houses into, is asking for an increase in the density. It was in the paper today. A huge increase in the density because the smart plan is allowing it. The smart growth. The smart growth model has resulted in comprehensive plan changes that are now resulting in significant increases in density. Growth is going to be the number-one issue on the ballot in November. I've got plenty of time. Okay? The voters are going to be better educated and knowledgeable about smart growth and the comprehensive plan. I can assure you of that. I believe that the November election is going to be, to a great degree, a referendum on the direction that the city is headed and planning related to growth and density. I'd like to see the council and the mayor, okay, make clear statements about where they stand on the plan for growth, the density of development, and the effects that it's having on the day-to-day life of the residents, citizens, and voters of the city of Hayden. I've spoken to you several times now. There are a number of people, you know, I've heard frequently from council members in all cities, well, nobody ever shows up, which basically sends a message that you take it that, well, maybe not that many people really care if they don't show up. Okay? A lot of people showed up and returned away. It looks to me like the city is monitoring the responsible growth for North Idaho page, which is cool. I have no problem with it. But the feedback that I've been getting demonstrates that they are aware of it. So, you've seen what's been said. You've seen the comments. You received emails and all that kind of stuff. This is about density, okay? Reduce the density. Listen to the people who live here. Okay? Revisit, as Post Falls is planning on doing, the smart growth model in their comprehensive plan. Not many people attended your workshops as a percentage of population, okay? Your workshops and the like. And I read the public comments, statements. Those who did comment, many of them, like I said, keep the small-town feel, control growth, control density, control all these things. As you've heard people say, they don't want what the comprehensive plan, for the most part, is creating and bringing to the county or city. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Just for clarification, the city didn't turn away people. You need to talk to the governor about that.
I understand.
He's the one who-
I can-
They're the ones that set the rules. We don't, we just have to follow them, so.
But I wasn't including the bad.
Well, I just, but some people think you do, you know, so. Okay. Melissa, we're going to do a public hearing. The city initiated. It's the fee schedule update. And the way this goes, staff will present. Council will ask staff questions. Public will be called on to comment. And if you do want to comment on the fee schedule, please fill out a form in the back. The council then asks the public questions. We close the hearing. Council deliberates and then we get a motion. So, your show, Melissa?
I think it's Sandy's show.
Okay.
Our finance director, so I don't know if she's, oh, there she is.
It is my show.
Hi, Sandy.
Although Melissa's going to have to answer any specific questions about the planning changes. So, you have in your packet a memo that explains basically what we've done with this fee schedule change. There were a few in building. Most were in planning and development, some in public works, and Suzie had a couple in recreation. If you have any questions about any of these fees, I'm happy to answer them or have Suzie or Melissa help.
Okay. Council, anybody have questions? Matt, you want to start? Matt has some questions.
President, I would like to ask Sandy. I've looked through the fee schedule three or four times just to make sure I read it correctly. Can you tell me, does the fee schedule include impact fees? I didn't see it.
Yes, it does.
Okay, what page is it on?
I'm looking.
Here's one right here.
Okay, they are on page four.
Page four?
At the top of the page.
Okay, so if I read this correctly, what we do as a city when a building permit is taken out, that we charge $1,813 as an impact fee to that one lot. Is that correct?
For transportation, that's correct.
So, transportation means that money goes to roads, signals, signs, so forth. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess, I just want to make a comment that that's way too low. We should be charging a lot, lot more for an impact fee that the builder will then turn around and charge the homeowner that's buying a new home. There's no way we can keep up with the capital costs that we have to pay for our roads. I think we have probably 30 to $50 million worth of projects out there that we cannot afford to pay for. And I don't want to raise taxes to do that. So, I would prefer that we increase our impact fees drastically and have the builder, developer pay for them. So, that's my comment.
Oh, I just wanted to tell Melissa- Councilmember Roder, that council recently approved a consultant to study impact fees and the Impact Fee Committee will be going through that to assess raising impact fees for that very reason. I just wanted to let everyone know that that consultant was selected and that'll be something that the impact fee will start looking at in the coming months.
And if I'm correct, we had a workshop previous to this meeting and I think in the circulation impact fee, we had like a million and a half dollars?
No, it's more than that. Circulation is 2.7.
2.7 million with projects that we have $40 million capital improvement. So, we can't fix the problem we have. So, by adding more people and more density, it's going to just get worse. And that's the point I want to make.
Dick, did you have anything?
No, go ahead.
Jerry? Okay. I think just to add a little bit to what Matt said too is, you may wonder why do we need a study, okay? The reason we need a study is because if we don't jump through the hoops, we get sued. And we just went through this not too long ago and we want to make sure we do it right the first time.
It's a process required by the impact fee.
Yeah, so, that's why we, you know, government red tape, you might call it. So, anyway, any other comments? I don't see any. Did we get anything from the public?
I've not received any.
Okay, nothing from the public. So, I guess we, did you have anything else, Melissa? Okay, I guess we will close the public hearing.
Just one thing. Sandy, did you remember how Councilwoman Delang noticed the equals versus plus?
Oh, yes. Yes, and that was updated and I sent an updated copy to Abby to attach to the resolution when it is passed.
It's not really a big deal, but it was a good catch. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, that's been taken care of.
Okay, let's close the public hearing and council deliberates. Councilmember Delang, do you have anything?
I support the fee increases. From time to time, we have to look at our fees and either adjust them higher or lower. In most cases, they're, I mean, they're higher, but the fees, I've reviewed all of them and I do support the proposed increases.
Thanks. Dick, do you have anything?
Well, I'll echo what she said. I think Matt's concern on that impact fee thing needs to be looked at. So, I don't have a problem with that. We should do that and get that information, but the rest of it, fine.
Matt, do you have anything?
I talked to Suzie, who runs our recreation department. And just to give an example why we do have increases is that the Coeur d'Alene School District had raised their hourly rate for gyms because we don't own any gyms. We have to rent them from the school district. And they went up significantly and we can't absorb that. So, we have to pass that along. So, that's an example of one of the fee increases. And there are numerous ones that we have to pass along. So, I just wanted to make that point. But I do approve and support our fee increases.
Okay, thank you, Matt. So, can we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to support it with looking at the impact fee thing included as part of it. Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Delang?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Okay, our second public hearing is for sewer reimbursement policy, Title VIII, Chapters 1, 2, and 6. And Melissa, you're-
Now I'm up.
Okay, now you're up.
And this is also city-initiated. So, this is to discuss our sewer collection system reimbursement policy and its code that we are proposing to add to Title VIII. So, just for the overview, we used to have something in our code that was kind of termed latecomers. And it allowed for developers to put in major sewer infrastructure that served others as well as them. And they were able to recoup some of their cost in putting that in from the people that connected to that afterwards. Okay, so that was a- Okay, so that was an increase over the top of the just standard cap fee. Now, after that NIBCA lawsuit that had to do with how sewer cap fees were collected, our attorney at the time recommended that we remove that from our code because it didn't seem to pass what the judgment was. Do you want to add anything on that, Caitlin? I mean, is that's pretty much the gist of it?
Yeah. What the Supreme Court's holding in the NIBCA lawsuit about how we calculate the connection fee, and it has to do with what we consider the net replacement value and having other outstanding amounts on the latecomer agreement.
So you couldn't have a fee on top of the standard fee, because they were just connecting to the system, too. So, that, removing that, kind of took a tool away from us that we had for financing sewer infrastructure. So we recognize that the city has many sewer needs and not enough funds to complete them, right? Story of our life. So what I'm going to propose tonight is a mechanism to have developers front the cost of major sewer infrastructure and get reimbursed through cap fees. So the risk of repayment is on the developer, and this will bring sewer to unsuared areas, which we've workshopped on this before, counsel. I've showed you the math that this increases the money in the city's cap fee account even after we reimburse the developer what they're due. So, this is a good thing for the city, because it will enable us to do even more projects like Councilwoman Roder was talking about. We have a lot of needs and not a lot of funds. So over like the last two years, we've been working on this, and that might seem crazy because it's only a few pages, but we had many versions of this code. I think we're on the ninth version right now. So we've vetted this through our city attorney, our public works director, our city engineer, other staff here at the city, and the development community, because they're the ones that we're hoping will use this tool to kind of get some sewer in the city. And then we also workshopped last summer with council. So, Part 8.1, 2 is definitions. We wanted to be really clear. We didn't want there to be any confusion on what we meant when we went through this. So we explained very clearly that we're talking about the city's collection cap fee. We're not talking about the Harbs treatment cap fee. We really define what we mean when we say something is frontage, because I think a lot of people are familiar with the term "frontage improvements," that a developer's required to do frontage improvements, right? That's sewer, that's road improvement, sidewalks, drainage, any of the utilities, the such. So we're really clear what we mean when we say the word "frontage," and we're really clear what we mean when we say "off-site" and "on-site," because those matter as you get into what's eligible for reimbursement and what's not. And then we explained the different types of lift stations and how those are determined as regional, subregional, or temporary, because those lift stations have different levels of eligibility on getting reimbursed. So then you go into 8.2.6, which we've called Financing Wastewater Collection System. So, the funding mechanisms are the first part of that, and we talk about that sewer capitalization fund that can be used to expand the system with the approval of city council. We talk about local improvement districts, or LIDs, to fund sewer improvements. And then we talk about sewer expansion by the property owners that it serves. So that's usually, in most cases, a developer. Not always, but like a developer. The next part is detail on the lift station. So it describes how lift stations are designated to the different types, and it explains when temporary lift stations can be installed, because we don't just let them go in all over the place. Has to be in accordance with our plan. And it describes our requirements for the lift station lot. And that's in there because we've gone through some painful experiences of what happens with the lift station lot, who owns it, that type of thing. So that's just really, we just tried to be as clear as possible in this code. The next part defines when improvements are eligible and defines the steps required by the developer to request reimbursement. So it has to be designed to city standards. There's a lot of standards in there that it talks about, not just city standards, but DEQ standards and the like. So it also talks about off-site. If it's off-site and it provides sewer to other property and was required to be over-deep or oversized to serve other properties, then they're eligible for reimbursement. If it's on-site and required to be oversized or over-deep, see, it's like if we're requiring something of them that they wouldn't have to do to serve their own development. It's a regional permanent lift station, or it's a subregional lift station that's required to be oversized to serve others. So if it's just a lift station that's required in their development just because of the elevation and terrain that they have in their development, but it only serves them, then we're not participating. So the next section talks about the application requirements, what they need to submit, design requirements, procurement requirements, because the way we are seeing this is it is using city funds, even if it's future city funds to fund these things, and designer requirements. So for lift stations, we're requiring that the engineer who designed it be off the city's roster. So those are engineers that we've already selected. We do it every like three years, have a roster that we can direct-select off of. We want lift stations to be designed by those people. The rest of the just sewer mains and that type of thing can be designed by any licensed engineer who's licensed in Idaho. The next section talks about the amount of reimbursement. So if it's an off-site extension that's going through an already-developed area, so an area that really won't connect to sewer, those are based on actual construction costs. If it's oversized or over-deep, there's tables in the code that talk about the percentage that the city will, would contribute to through cap fees. If it's a permanent lift station, it's the actual construction costs again. And then for engineering, it's eligible for permanent lift stations, but temporary lift stations or gravity mains, it's not. So then there's a section that talks about the developer agreement. So if we did one of these, they would all have an agreement. So we've said that they can't exceed 10 years initially. They could, with the approval of council, have an extension, one extension of five years. There's a whole section in there about how we reimburse. So they could potentially get 75% of each cap fee collected in their own development until either the agreement expired or they were fully reimbursed. This isn't a money-making operation for them. It's them getting potentially reimbursed. Or they can have, choose to do 50% of the cap fees in the service area of the infrastructure that they selected.
Question, if I may. The cap fee that's collected by the developer at that time, is the dollar amount set by the city, or is that something that the developer can set the cap fee in collecting these fees?
It is the cap fee collected at the time of building permit off of our fee schedule, just like...
So we determine that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason...
Can everybody mute their phones? That's on...
So the reason that they don't get 100% of every cap fee is that we have other needs. So, you know, this is, you know, development coming in and, you know, expanding the system, but we have other needs. And if you look in our sewer master plan, we have other needs on our CIP, so we can't have all of our money going to reimburse people. So, and then it also just describes that you can't, so let's say they chose the 50% option because they thought that that would work for them, but some of that area is already under an agreement. Well, too bad, you can't collect from any of them until that agreement expires or that developer that had that agreement is fully reimbursed. So hopefully that makes sense. So, public notice, I definitely kept the developers in the loop. They weighed in a lot on this code because we knew that they would be the people trying to use it, and we didn't want to create code and go through all this process that never got used. So we kept them in the loop. It was noticed in the paper on April 9th. It's been on our website, and I've not received any comments. I figured if I received comments, it'd be from the developers, but they were really kept, you know, in the loop the whole way. So the options for council are to, oh, whoops, sorry. Approve this code, not annexation agreement, or change anything in the code that you want to change, or not approve it. And if approved, please follow the ordinance, then under unfinished business later in the Any questions for me, or any comments? Have we received any comments?
Jerry, do you have any questions?
There might be people online that want to comment. I'm not sure.
Matt?
I do have a question. This brings back to memory, one of the plaintiffs in the NIBCA lawsuit was Viking Construction that sued the city. And around the time that we settled that case, there was a, we had an agreement, the city had an agreement with, or the city had in place a latecomers statute. And because of that lawsuit that was created by the NIBCA, we could not, we couldn't utilize latecomers anymore. So my question is, because I'm kind of confused, now we have a policy to fund when we don't have a latecomers fee. Why didn't we give Viking Construction $650,000 for that pump station when our legal counsel at that town, John Cafferty, who now is a judge, said we had no legal obligation to give them that $650,000?
I don't think that's a question for me, is it?
Oh, for anybody.
It was an item unanimously approved by council, so I think that's a rhetorical question of why it was done, certainly not one for staff, or I don't think Melissa could answer that, why it was done. It was something approved by council at the time.
Because I talked to John at that time, and I said, "Do we have a legal obligation?" I mean, they just sued us, and it cost us over a million dollars to defend that lawsuit. Do we have a legal obligation to give them that $650,000? And he said, "No." We didn't have this policy in place.
Right.
So why did we give it to them? This is my question. What was the rationale?
I don't know the rationale, but I will tell you that at the time, we had a policy in place that was for reimbursement for oversizing and over-deep. We did have a policy for that, and so they had to ask council permission. Council gave them permission to move forward. We negotiated a cost that was presented to council in workshop, and the council approved that agreement. So I can't tell you why it was approved. I can only tell you the process.
I voted against it.
Matt, are you referring to the Hura money?
No. No, this was, this was back when the lawsuit was just ended, and the pump station south of Hayden Avenue, there was some kind of agreement that we had with them to do it oversized, and with the idea that they could get latecomers money, but then the latecomers' money went away because of the lawsuit. So we didn't initiate that, that we didn't file a lawsuit against ourselves. And so then, it was decided that they would get, Viking would get $650,000, that our attorney said, "We were not obligated to do that, to pay him, pay Viking." And what I heard was, "It's the right thing to do."
I don't remember that at all.
It's hard to respond to that, Matt, when that was quite a while ago, and without the paperwork in front of me, I'd be more than happy, though, to get with you later after I've refreshed my memory on it.
Right, now that there's a proposed policy, I see why we would have done it, would do it after this is approved, but then Alan said there were some other kind of...
We had a policy, it's different, this is a policy to basically replace that policy in part because of the struggle in determining what is fair and the long lead time of the negotiation and all the back and forth. And so, again, that was, that was a cap fee. It ended up being basically a cap fee reimbursement in a different format, but it was a policy in, on the books that the council had the discretion to use. Similar to this, this is a policy that's on the books that the council had discretion on.
So does this replace the old policy?
It does replace the old policy.
This is actually going to be in code. I don't know that the other one is in code.
Yeah, it was just a policy. This was, thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, this will be a definitive code section that's changed, allows us to do that. Back then, it was in policy to reimburse for certain parts of the project, and so we were looking at a regional lift station that was significant, not only to that property, but to other surrounding properties. And so to get it funded, we entered into negotiations to pay our portion, and they paid their portion. And then, when you look at the amount that would come back, based on the number of cap fees that could come in there, it was over $6 million, I think, in total cap fees or something like that, that would come back in to pay for that. And so I think there was some justification. I don't have all that information here, but it was, it was to pay for a regional lift station, not only for that property. And we are, you know, with everything going on, we are limited with what we can do with our cap fees. And so you had existing properties that had already annexed in, expecting, you know, sewer service at some point, and that was a way to move forward with that infrastructure. So that's, I don't remember all the details in the negotiations and...
It's a long history, so, I mean, we certainly, but it started out as part of the annexation out in, on the west side of town. Started out as possibly an LID that was explored for a number of years. That was then decided, for various reasons, that maybe that wasn't the best way. This was explored as another way of the developer funding the project, financing the project, I guess, maybe a better term. It didn't get reimbursed 100%, and we have used that same policy since I've been here at least twice. That's not the only time. And so, and again, it was a council, it's a council discretion. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go over it, and what was...
And I think it's, you know, important to note, we have two different sewer funds. We have an operations and maintenance, which is the monthly fee that existing citizens pay. It doesn't have anything to do with that. We're talking about the capitalization fees that are paid for. When you're looking to have growth pay for itself, that money came out of the capitalization fee for growth of the system, so existing citizens didn't pay anything, you know, for that lift station.
Some of the things that we've done with that is when the development was being planned, it needed a certain-sized sewer line to feed that thing, that one particular subdivision. But if subdivisions were going to continue in that area, you would need a larger pipeline to handle all that growth. So what we did is we made an agreement with them when they were putting the line in the ground to oversize the thing so it would handle future growth, and then they would be reimbursed for the oversizing that they didn't need. It saved the city money, it saved the taxpayers' money. It was the right thing to do at the time, so...
This is really similar. This is just really being specific on how to do it, rather than negotiating a new agreement every time. This like really clearly spells it out, which I think will be better for staff.
And, okay. Any other questions for Melissa?
I'd like to just make a comment and ask Melissa for clarification. The key to this is that if this was only being done, if the developer was building this just for...
this just for the development itself and it wasn't being oversized, then this would have no bearing on it, the city of Hayden would say no.
Right, it doesn't meet the, if it doesn't meet the eligibility criteria, then it's just not, it doesn't...
And so I want the public to understand that, that the developer's not getting anything free or extra. It's, it helps the city and helps the developer and it's, it's, in the long run, you know, getting that done, an oversized system built is very beneficial for future needs. So I just wanted you to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Is there any public comments?
I have not received any. Anyone online? Anyone online?
Anyone online that wants to speak to the sewer reimbursement policy?
If you're muted, push star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, hearing none. Any other comments? Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing and counsel can deliberate. Jerry, do you want to start us off?
I would support this.
Okay. Dick?
It's fine.
Matt?
No comment.
So can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the sewer policy.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Roder?
No.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're on to unfinished business for a sewer reimbursement policy ordinance, Title 8, Chapter 1, 2, and 6. So this is where... Is this it?
Yep.
Okay, do I need to read? Read this? Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates and to approve the first reading followed by a roll call vote.
So moved.
And I'll second it. Any deliberation comments?
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
No.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have the approval of the rainy...
You need to read the title.
You have to read it by title.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me, sorry. For any of you that don't know Abby, she's a godsend, believe me. Okay. The mayor really owes me for not showing up tonight, you know that? Okay. An ordinance of the city of Hayden, Cootney County, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Hayden City Code by amending Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 2 to add definitions, amending Title 8, Chapter 2 to add Section 6, financing wastewater collection systems, providing several ability, providing for repeal of the conflicting provisions and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
And Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're on to new business. Item 5A, approval of fee schedule update resolution. Who's presenting that or?
That's just the...
That's just kind of a follow-up.
Yeah, it's just the resolution that accompanied the public hearing we heard earlier from Sandy.
Any comments or anything on this?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the fee schedule update resolution, item 5A.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
And Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Okay, item B, Atlas Park preliminary plat request. Donna?
Did I miss four B?
Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, that's why I ran over here. I was like, wait a minute.
You doing four B?
No, that's an Abby.
I'm sorry, I'm...
He's doing four B.
I was like, wait a minute.
I'm actually going to have to address this.
Okay, Caitlin, you get the...
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we, you know, ordinances have to be published within 30 days of approval and this is one that we actually previously approved and it missed the publication cutoff time. So just administrative fell through the cracks. So we're going to go through it again and approve the ordinance. It's a zone map amendment, so this applicant went through the zone change request that was approved. And to officially adopt a change in the zone map requires an ordinance.
Okay, thanks Caitlin.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Caitlin? Hearing none, we need a motion, please, or...
Motion to...
Suspend the rule of reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got a, okay, motion to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates and to approve the first reading followed by a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
And Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Okay, now you're up, Donna.
Thanks.
We wanted to see if you were paying attention.
So tonight, we're here for a public meeting for the Atlas Park subdivision, PZE 200226. I believe that I'll be presenting the whole public meeting, but if you should have comments for the developer, I believe that Drew Ditman is on Zoom meeting in order to make room for additional public for tonight. So the property was annexed in 1986 by ordinance number 182 and it's zoned light industrial. The development team is the applicant engineer of record Drew Ditman of Lake City Engineering. The owners are the Doherty Investments LLC and Henry Schmidt, and the developer is Doherty Investments. So the applicant's proposal is for, there we go, is for these three lots, this little ski lot here, this lot and this lot, on the northwest corner of West Hayden Avenue and North Atlas Road, to be developed by three phases, to extend Dakota Avenue from where it exists today to the west to intersect with the Carrington Meadows subdivision to the west. They are developing two large lots, also as large light industrial lots. And then they're developing a perimeter border of lots along North Atlas Road and West Hayden Avenue. So the standards for subdivision approval are in your memo to the council. It's, there's a staff review that's in there that addressed all of these. And the first two standards talk about public health, safety, and welfare. And then the second standard talks about whether or not the infrastructure can be constructed and we address those throughout the staff review and throughout the other standards. So is the infrastructure in compliance with applicable city, state, and federal policies and regulations? And three is kind of broken up into several parts. So 3A is have provisions been made for the water supply system that satisfy the city, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and the Northern Lakes Fire Protection District requirements? In your packet, you saw a will serve letter that was provided by Avondale Irrigation District on November 16th of 2020. There were back and forth letters with Northern Lakes Fire Protection District because I asked the question. I was trying to figure out that in residential subdivisions, the fire department has a requirement for a secondary exit out of that residential subdivision after 30 lots. And so I was just trying to figure out from a timing perspective when Dakota Avenue was going to have to be constructed. And it was kind of, I opened Pandora's box a little bit because there was a lot of kind of back and forth with what was required in Carrington Meadows and then what was required as part of this project. And by the end of the conversation, the Dakota Avenue will be constructed as part of the Phase 1 requirements, but it wasn't a requirement of Northern Lakes Fire Protection District. So that was kind of the end result of that whole back and forth series of emails. Hayden Lake Irrigation District has a water main which may need to be relocated and should it be relocated, then that old line, old line will be removed. Provisions, have they been made for public sewer system in accordance with the city and the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board's master plans as amended that satisfy the city, the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board, and DEQ? So a will serve was provided by the city on December 12th, 2020, and the existing gravity in Atlas Road will be connected to Hayden Avenue and Dakota Avenue to make it live. So there is an existing gravity line that was put in a long time ago that will actually become live with this project. Have provisions been made for snow storage that satisfy the city public works department as it relates to the snow storage design and removal practices? And if that snow storage is proposed to be co-located with stormwater, if it's not in roadside swales and in regional detention areas, then they need to be approved and addressed. And have provisions been made for stormwater systems that satisfy the city and DEQ? Stormwater and snow storage shall be reviewed at the time of the construction plan review in accordance with Title 8, which basically says that you need to maintain your stormwater on the site that you're developing. And I don't know why, it is when I talk in front of you, I get dry mouth, but anyway. So I apologize. Have provisions been made for streets that are consistent with the adopted transportation plan as amended and the transportation element of the adopted comprehensive plan that satisfy the city Idaho Transportation Department adjacent jurisdictions and local highway district requirements? So based on the information that was provided, every subdivision that comes in the door has to provide a trip generation letter that addresses how many expected trips are going to come out of or into this particular subdivision. And as was approved a couple of months ago, we have transportation impact analysis triggers that were adopted by policy. So those triggers were tripped and so they, an analysis was done based on what would be required to be mitigated for additional transportation. So per Melissa's email, the intersection of Atlas Road and Hayden Avenue is currently under design for a roundabout. And it has a required right-of-way dedication that would amount to nearly the same amount of cost in order to purchase it as what the resulting extraordinary impact calculated to be. So this extraordinary impact, after they dedicate the required right-of-way for the roundabout, doesn't preclude a future light industrial builder, say for one of those larger lots, to have to do another transportation impact analysis because they might actually be required to mitigate more. So if you look at the streets, just as kind of a recap of the staff review, the typical sections for Atlas Road, Dakota Avenue, and Hayden Avenue show that Atlas is a collector C1, Dakota Avenue is a local light industrial road, and Hayden Avenue is an arterial. And those each have different timing components that are when they're going to be required to be constructed. And they also have differing minimum intersection spacings and approach widths. So the right-of-way dedication for Atlas Road and Hayden Avenue are proposed to happen at the time of Phase 1. And as proposed currently, the dedication and development of Dakota will happen also with Phase 1. The minimum intersection spacing, that's the intersection between roads, not approaches, but roadways, is 330 feet on both Atlas and Dakota, but it's 500 feet on Hayden Avenue. And the minimum approach spacing on Atlas and Dakota is 150 feet apart. And on Hayden Avenue, there are no individual approaches. So each one of those approaches will be a joint approach with their property owner to reduce that mitigation, to reduce that possible conflict points. There are multimodal connections, a Class 2 bicycle lane would, will need to be constructed on the north side of Hayden Avenue to meet that requirement. So type 2 street drainage landscaping is installed at the time of building permits. The reason that we don't install those street tree landscaping at the time of subdivision is because we really want it to stay alive. And so when it goes in at the time of building permit, it's irrigated and those, those street trees have a much higher survivability rate. Any landscaping associated with any green space tracks or joint stormwater swale shall be constructed and required as part of the subdivision phase. And there's a type 1 buffer that shall be provided along the west boundary of the subdivision where those light industrial lots, but those residential lots of Carrington Meadows. That's a requirement anywhere across the city if you're a light industrial zone, butted up against residential. Provisions have been made for parks and open space that are consistent with the adopted parks master plan. Industrial subdivisions are not required to dedicate park area. Provisions have been made for erosion controls and geo hazards and those will be reviewed at the time of the construction plan review. And provisions have been made for gas, power, telecommunications, mailboxes, and similar infrastructure. And again, that is all done, all those utilities are put underground and it's all reviewed at the time of construction plan review. Like you got some questions going, Roger.
Any questions?
All right. Okay, so provisions have been made for driveway locations that take into consideration other driveways, snow storage, utility boxes, crosswalks, adjacent roads, mailboxes, and the like. So the final location of all driveways shall be reviewed by the city to make sure that we're not having any conflict points with that roundabout at Hayden Avenue and Atlas Road, as well as any utility infrastructure that may be, those phone pedestal boxes, et cetera, and any snow storage locations. Mailbox locations shall be determined based on the United States Post Office and the city of Hayden requirements. So a light industrial zone is a land use classification for a district that's suitable for manufacturing, processing, fabrication, assemblage, freight handling, or similar operations of a non-nuance character. The purpose of the light industrial zone is to encourage the development of manufacturing and wholesale businesses that are clean, quiet, and free of noise, odor, dust, and smoke. So just by reference, that's the language that's in the zoning code and then the comprehensive plan code, our language is virtually the same. So if you're looking at the project site itself, it's got light industrial to the north and to the northwest, sea of light industrial to the east, little bit of commercial directly to the east, abutting Hayden Avenue. Southeast is also light industrial and light industrial on Hayden Avenue that's in the city limits as its zone today. So the comprehensive plan analysis is in your staff review. I did... I did not include the full analysis here. We did address five goals, seven or eight policies that are identified that are in there, and a couple of action items that are specific to this location as it relates to the subdivision request. So the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of the costs to provide services by paying the fees, furnishing land, or providing other mitigation measures for off-site impacts to streets, parks, and other public facilities within the community. So all onsite and offsite improvements shall be required of the developer, the extension of the infrastructure per the adopted city codes, standards, and plans, and mitigating the offsite improvements as required. So we noticed this to 23 agencies, and of those 23 agencies, the Cootney County Community Development Department had no comments. The Coeur d'Alene Airport had no comments but requested an navigation easement. Avondale Irrigation District had a will serve letter, and they also provided no additional comments. Northern Lakes Fire Protection District had a letter regarding construction requirements. Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board had a letter regarding sewer odors and adverse impacts to the site and that sewer easement language that they've been requesting that go on those plots. The Idaho Department of Environmental Quality had a letter regarding construction requirements, and the Idaho Fish and Game has a letter with comments related to wildlife that are generally in the area. We had two public comments that were in support prior to the public meeting, a public hearing with planning and zoning. One of them just checked the box that they supported it, and one of them stated, "We'll eventually provide incomes and jobs." So the staff recommended conditions of approval are in your, in the staff analysis, and I just summarized them here for both time and, you know, essence. Time is of the essence, I guess. So summarized here, any dedications and easements required of the subdivision need to be on the plat. The phasing plan, because this is a three-phased project, we always take a look at the phasing plan at the time of the construction plan submittal to make sure that anything that is required of a future phase, if it has to go through the first phase, gets constructed in a timely fashion so you don't have to rip up brand-new pavement because you missed something. So that's kind of the goal there. Joint stormwater requirements, easements, and maintenance, should they exist. The Northern Lakes Fire Protection District requirements, driveway locations. The street lighting shall be included in the construction plans for the streets that are in the project. Individual site plans will be reviewed at the time of building permit application. The landscaping plan and the timing of when that construction occurs. The navigation easement request from the Coeur d'Alene Airport. People think that the prairie is flat, but it's not entirely flat. So if there is any mass grading that needs to occur, they have to have a plan that's in place and part of their construction plan submittal. And any mined areas, so any areas of the project that they are looking to harvest gravels and what have you for the roadway, those all have to be identified on the information that we have available so folks know where they can and can't build. ADA requirements related to pedestrian crossings need to be met, and the roadway construction The right-of-way dedication and granting of utility easements in accordance with Condition Number 12, and the granting of that right-of-way and utility easement with respect to the roundabout as an extraordinary impact mitigation shall also be completed at the time of final plat of the first plat. Detailed analysis will occur during construction plan review, and the city will determine if change is made or minor or major, and then the resulting process that would be required. All permits from outside agencies shall be obtained prior to construction or building permit issuance, and the approval of this subdivision request shall run with the land. So then I kind of listed those standards of approval again if we need to go back to them specifically. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the subdivision request to the city council with the staff recommended conditions of approval. In your staff review memo, the draft recommendation minutes were in the memo to the city council, and both of those were approved last night at Planning and Zoning Commission with no So with that, the city council may approve, approve its conditions, or deny the request for a subdivision.
Thanks, Donna. Any questions? Jury?
Donna? Oh. Donna?
I have a question.
The Harbs requested odor easement, and so would that be part of the conditions?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, is, is there anybody online that wants?
Oh, no, it's not.
Sorry, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. The one question, Donna, could you go back to the slide that shows the lot or the property?
Sorry, way back there.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Okay. Where's the light industrial going to go, or Phase One? Do you know that yet?
It's pretty much along Atlas Road and along Hayden Avenue.
Okay, and then Phase Two?
Where'd my mouse go? I believe Phase Two, it's either one or the other. So Phase Two is either up here or down here, the, one of the two larger lots, and then the third one is, is the other larger lot.
Okay. And those will be residential?
No, it's all light industrial.
It's all light industrial.
All light industrial.
Very good. Very good. Does council, I'm going to ask this question because of my former life, does council think that we should put a condition in there that any prospective buyers of these, this property, buildings, whatever, should be notified that there is the wastewater plant?
Yes.
And I, like I said, for my former life.
That's not unusual.
Yeah. But I don't know.
The airport too, as far as that goes, yeah.
Yeah, well, we have one from the airport, right, Donna? They commented, they wanted an aviation agreement?
They wanted an navigation easement, and that's, and Harbs also, that's part of that odor near the airport, that's all in that language.
It is.
In that easement request.
Okay, thank you. Then it's covered.
And it goes on the plat, correct.
Okay. All right. So any comments?
I would support your comment.
Okay. Matt?
I like the idea of industrial development because it does create jobs. The one thing that I also like about it is that I've got a study here that was done on the impact to municipalities depending on the zone classification of residential, commercial, industrial, or agricultural. And based on this study for Cootney County, it says that for every dollar that we collect from industrial property, we put out 89 cents in services. So that's one category that we, we get ahead on. Conversely, for every dollar that we collect from residential properties, we have to put a dollar nine out. So we go backwards. The idea is the balance, to somewhere get where it balances. Unfortunately, we're out of balance. That's the problem. But I, I support this. I think this is, this creates jobs.
Anything, Dick?
Well, for those reasons, that's one reason, one thing that, that a lot of people don't think about is we have the airport. That's unique to us, and that's why we've done light industrial and businesses around there so that they won't be affected by the airport noise or by the sewer plant that's also in the same area because, in fact, we mentioned this at our prior hearing, if, if they build residences too close to that sewer plant, and they say they can take care of the problem, you know what smells. And there are times when, when the wind will come up in the evening or something, and you're going to get an odor. And we've said, I've been on that sewer board for 30 years, and we have tried extremely hard and spent a lot of money to keep that from happening, but you can't prevent it all the time. So that's one of the reasons why this change was made through the developer to change their goal of what they wanted to do, and light industrial was the answer, and I support that 100%.
This was the property that was brought to us once before for residential, right? Yeah, and we, we turned that down, okay? I just, I thought it was, so, okay. If we have no more comments, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Atlas Park preliminary plat request.
Second.
With, sorry, Councilman Roder, with the staff recommended.
With the staff recommend, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
Councilmember Pana Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Okay, next up, Mark's Ranch preliminary plat request. Looks like Donna's going to be with us a while.
Yep.
And light takes time to load.
So this is the Mark's Ranch preliminary plat subdivision request. It's PZE 21-0023. The development team and proposal, the property was annexed officially in January of 2021. It's ordinance number 617, and it was annexed as residential R1. The owners are R and K Development LLC, and the engineer of record is Eric Olson, Olson Engineering. I think he might actually be on the go-to meeting as well, and I know that Jeremy's in the back as well, so I'm not too sure who's aware, but anyway. So the proposal was for three lots for a total of 54 plus or minus acres. It's a phased development, 70 total lots, maximum density per the annexation agreement of two dwelling units per acre, and the park area to be developed as a specialty park. So this, this is the three lots that are included in the subdivision request that were annexed off of Lancaster. And with that, annexation came a request from Lakes Highway District to include this additional right-of-way and the knob kind of area as well. So just as a kind of a gander, and you kind of saw these pictures when we did the annexation, but looking south from Lancaster Road, it's pretty much of a hill up to the existing home. And this is kind of an overview, it doesn't really give you the depth and breadth of the property, but it kind of lays out the land. So this is the preliminary plat proposal. It shows the knob kind of as a, as a park area. It shows the preliminary lot layout. The applicant has been working with staff pretty diligently on trying to make sure that, that the road designs work well, and that might actually change a little bit trying to mitigate part of those steep roadways, so, but that would be in a future phase, not necessarily in the first phase of the development. So again, those standards of approval, those first two are pretty much covered in the whole rest of the staff review. Have provisions been made for the water supply system? And we have a will serve letter provided by Avondale Irrigation District on January 11th of this year. They did identify a booster pump that would need to be installed by the developer, and a Northern Lakes Fire Protection District letter and follow-up emails. With respect to the sewer system, there's will serve was provided by the city on January 13th of 2021, and sewer shall be provided through the south, through to the Stone Creek subdivision, south of this property. And easements shall be required through the property of the south should it not be constructed. Just as an FYI to this sentence, spoke with the developer's engineer for the Stone Creek property to the south, and we're anticipating those construction plans to come in either the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So that is kind of working through the process.
So can I ask a question about, I just want to make sure, because I know there was a conflict between the two developers. So has that been resolved, that road issue and the sewer line that needs to go up through that road?
As far as we're aware, that has been, they are working together to make that, these two subdivisions work. So provisions have been made for snow storage and for stormwater. We met with engineer of record late last week, working through stormwater items as it relates to this project. It's going to have probably some unconventional kind of stormwater requirements because it is sitting on a rock that doesn't drain the way the prairie gravels drain, and we expected that. So we'll work through those during that construction plan review, making sure that it meets the city's requirements, and then been working with Department of Environmental Quality, making sure that it meets their requirements before they can go to construction. So as part of the Mark's annexation, they worked through a trip gen letter and a transportation analysis as part of the annexation, and the mitigation fees that were required of the Mark's Ranch annexation were paid prior to the annexation ordinance being recorded and approved. So those fees for mitigation for transportation have already been received by the city. So then looking at the streets, mostly the work on Lancaster Road, and then the internal streets, the typical section for Lancaster Road is a C1, it's a collector, and the internal streets are local residential street sections. Any dedication of right-of-way on Lancaster Road shall be required as part of Phase One of the subdivision. And then the internal streets will be plotted and dedicated at the time of final plat of each of the phases of that, of the subdivision. Minimum intersection spacing for Lancaster is 330 feet, and the minimum approach spacing for Lancaster Road is 150 feet. The multimodal connections, they exist on Lancaster Road with that existing multimodal path going east and west. And then the multimodal connections on those internal streets, which were a requirement to connect through the Stone Creek subdivision to the south, will occur internally as well. Type 2 street frontage landscaping shall be installed at the time of the building permits of the lots inside Mark's Ranch subdivision. The property that is adjacent to Lancaster Road, however, will be constructed as a subdivision requirement and not as a, as a per-lot requirement. The landscaping associated with green space tracks or any joint stormwater swale shall be constructed and required as part of the subdivision phase that it happens in, or it's required to occur as a result of. And landscaping required as part of the park shall be constructed in accordance with the timing identified in the annexation agreement. So provisions have been made for parks and open space. The park area shall be constructed in accordance with the requirements of the annexation agreement. And provisions have been made for erosion controls and geo-hazards, and those always reviewed with every set of construction plans that comes in the door. And the utilities shall be installed all underground within the development in accordance with Title 12. Provisions have been made for those driveway locations. The final location of driveways shall be reviewed by the city to address conflicts as well as utility locations in those snow storage locations. And the mailbox location shall be determined based on the U.S. Postal Service and the City of Hayden requirements. So the residential R1 zone is established to protect stable neighborhoods of single-family dwellings on smaller lots. A comprehensive plan defines it that this land use type represents a classic Hayden neighborhood where single-family homes dominate and densities are low, typically ranging from three to four units per acre. Accessory dwelling units are permitted, but two-family dwellings and other types of missing middle housing are not. So again, I just wanted to kind of show you that the location of the project site is zoned residential. So again, I just wanted to kind of show you that the location of the project site is zoned residential R1 as is the property to the west and to the north and to the south. The areas that aren't in color are in unincorporated Kootenay County. And they're still all residential uses, but they're not in the city. So there's an extensive comprehensive plan analysis for this project site. And again, I didn't go into all of the parts and pieces of this, they were in the staff review for your review. The developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no mirror of its fair share of the costs by providing services, paying for fees, furnishing land or providing other mitigation measures. And again, all onsite and off-site improvements shall be required of the developer. Extension of any infrastructure per the adopted city code standards and plans and mitigating any off-site improvements as required. So the noticing was sent out and the agency to 24 agencies and the Coeur d'Alene Airport responded with no comments and requested an abogation easement. And I actually called them and said, you have an abogation easement, it was a requirement of the annexation agreements. And we realized that there was a process breakdown, so we have worked through a new process so that those abogation easements are actually going back to the Coeur d'Alene Airport, they're doing the recordation of them. And then they're notifying the city that they have happened, so they have them on file now instead of asking for them every step of the process. So just FYI. So that exists, we don't have to do it. The Coeur d'Alene School District was neutral with their comments, they did provide some enlightening documentation in their letter that they provided in your staff review that talked about how many students they predicted were gonna come out of this housing development and their basic response related to how that might impact the classrooms. Ultimately, like the last paragraph, it's the last paragraph, they did say they were neutral. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality provided a letter regarding construction requirements. And Fish and Game, again, replied with a letter with comments relating to not feed the wildlife as well as other things to expect with the wildlife. Northern Lakes Fire Protection District provides comments after they have received application by an applicant to review them and paid their fees to Northern Lakes Fire Protection District. And for whatever reason, we did not get that prior to the public hearing in April. But after that and before this meeting, they did respond with a letter that was in your staff review that just talks about the conditions that they have at the time of construction approval. We did have one public comment prior to the public hearing in opposition stating the following general concerns. They talked about urban sprawl, traffic, animal displacement, crime, garbage on roadways, environmental impacts, quality of life, destruction of trees and land, turning Hayden into a larger city than the infrastructure can handle and Hayden losing its charm which residents cherish. And then public comment at the hearing, there was one that was neutral. They read excerpts from the school district response letter. There were three in opposition, they were concerned about the trail as it was proposed, so close to their backyards. The state of who uses the area, trash, fires, drugs, booze, et cetera. Comments related to density within the Stone Creek North subdivision. And then additional comments for public were positive with respect to the applicant's developer-owner review of their comments and willing to work toward a resolution. So I'm going to back up briefly. Sorry, we should do this differently, there we go. So as proposed, and in order to kind of meet part of the annexation direction. Originally, as proposed, there was a 50-foot hiking trail that came from the south all the way to the north along the west boundary of the property. And the residents that are down here were relatively concerned over the fact that this 50-foot trail was between two backyards. Who was gonna use it, who was gonna maintain it, how is it gonna be policed, really concerned. And so when their comments came in, staff sent those comments back to the developer in order for them to be able to see if they could resolve that or propose a different solution prior to the public hearing that night. So at the public hearing, the developer basically acknowledged the fact that those were all really good comments, very practical viewpoint. And the Planning and Zoning Commission in their review of it concurred that that wasn't a good location for that trail to go. And so when I go through the conditions, I'll note the condition that the Planning and Zoning Commission added as part of their recommendation to City Council. Okay, so the staff recommendations, recommended conditions of approval are summarized here. Again, any dedications and easements will be reflected on the plat. The development shall use sanitary sewer to the south and provide easements if it's, if they haven't got that all worked out. Looks like the timing is gonna work though, so we'll hope for that. Future development must meet the WUI guidelines, that's the Wildland Urban Interface Guidelines. And it's to, it's wildfire, not wildland, right? Wildfire, urban interface, yeah, that's it. It's a fire prevention, it's acknowledged that that area is on the outskirts, those are relatively large lots that are being developed in this subdivision. And they will work with the fire department to address those at the time of building of the residential structures. Northern Lakes Fire Protection District requirements, mailbox locations, we addressed the abogation easement requirement. Driveway locations, street lighting will be done per the standards. Landscaping plan and when those, when that various landscaping will need to be constructed. Joint swale requirements, again, that stormwater is gonna be probably a little unconventional. Stormwater, geotechnical topography and terrain. Roadway construction requirements. Temporary turnaround, so because it's a phased subdivision, you always have to look and see whether or not you have to have any temporary turnarounds that meet both the city's requirement and the fire protection district's requirement. Special use parks, timing of construction and dedication in accordance with the annexation agreements. And then I, since I'm the guy that's always looking at these conditions of approval, I kind of like to lump them together in their relativeness, relativeness together. Not the right word, but anyway. So the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed that that trail shall be removed from the current location. And that's during the review of the construction or review of the park plan and what's going on with the with the park plan, how that's developed and how this whole, you know, multimodal path system and connectivity meets both the transportation plans and the park plans. That that'll be reviewed at that time and at the time of the subdivision.
Hey Donna, I have just a quick comment on that. During the planning and zoning meeting, they were hopeful, planning and zoning, that we could find another spot for a hiking trail kind of up along the backs of some lots. But we've kind of found that the same situation that the people along Emerald Estates didn't like, that that kind of exists no matter where you put it, behind someone's fence. So we've talked about, you know, it's not in this phase, but we've talked about just doing additional improvements to that rock knob area instead of doing that and kind of abandoning that. And since it was discussed quite a bit at planning and zoning, I just wanted to bring that up.
Question, regarding the trail in the park, who maintains, if there is a trail? And who maintains the park and is that a private or public park?
It's a public park, city park.
And will maintain the park?
Yep. The phasing plan, because this is a phased subdivision, will be part of the construction plan reviews. Site topography measures, because again, this isn't flat, it's on a hill, so we'll be looking at that during construction plan review. Detailed analysis will occur during the construction plan review. And again, minor and major changes depending on if those, if they're minor, it'll be a staff identified item that'll be covered in the construction improvement agreement. And if it's determined to be major, it'll come back to the City Council for review. All permits from outside agencies shall be obtained prior to construction of building permit issuance. And the approval shall run with the land as well. So again, those are those approvals. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with all 20 of the conditions that we've kind of gone through. The draft written recommendation in minutes were in the memo to City Council. And both of those were approved last night at Planning and Zoning, again, with no changes. So the City Council may approve, approve with conditions or deny the subdivision request.
Ready for questions? Anybody have questions?
No, I'm fine.
I have one. I want to bring up a dam issue. And actually Roger brought this up a while ago on this property, there's a gentleman that maintains a dam that's up above to the east and up on a ridge. Does that create a problem? Have we resolved that issue or is that even an issue at this point? It's, there's a water source up there and he controls it.
It's not above this property, it was down.
Southeast.
Yeah, southeast, kind of next to where Stone Creek was. I mean, Donna has reached out to Department of Water Resources, is that where you started? And it doesn't sound like anyone can find documentation that he has the right to dam that. I mean, we were, we were all kind of thinking that maybe you shouldn't have brought that up, but so we haven't, we haven't found anything with that and the statements he made in that was a different subdivision. I know these two get kind of blended, but it was a different subdivision that he made all those comments in. And we haven't found that he has any right to dam that or.
To note that the entities that would regulate his ability to dam the area are now all aware that he has a dam. I couldn't figure it out.
Still a dam issue, right?
So it's been an interesting thing to navigate.
Well, and thanks for bringing that up, Matt, but he had dammed it in the past and that was part of the concern. Is when he does that, it floods a couple of the proposed lots here, so.
Yeah, but in a different subdivision, not this one.
Yeah, it's a different.
Different subdivision.
Okay.
Which one am I thinking of?
You're thinking of the Stone Creek North, which is to the south of this one. That's why I'm saying it's hard in your mind to separate these two, but they are different subdivisions. Has nothing to do with Marx.
I'll just shut up then.
It's not a dam issue.
All right. Okay, and I have been informed that the Marx Ranch folks are available if council has any questions for them.
We've been through this before.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're to the point of entertaining a motion.
I will make a motion to approve with the conditions that were suggested, 122.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call please.
I'd just like to say I like this kind of development because let's see, average home per acre is 1.3 homes per acre and the smallest lot is a third of an acre and the largest is up to 1.47, so that's the kind of low density that I like to see and so that's my comment.
Okay, roll call please, Abby.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Deleng?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Okay, the next action item, item D, Ken Doris' private road request. And Donna's still with us.
So I don't know if it was the last council meeting or the council meeting before, you had received a private road request. Private roads are allowed in city code, but they do require the request to be approved by the City Council, so that's why we're here tonight. So the property is located at 1225 West Orchard Avenue. And that is west of North Macy Loop, almost directly northeast of Orange Blossom Court, between Reed and Ramsey Road. So the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan shows this area as being mixed residential. And the definition of mixed residential in the future land use map identifies this area as being a zone that provides for a range of residential structures including single-family, two-family and three-family dwelling units as well as their accessory dwelling units on individual lots if they apply. And so as we're moving kind of forward and they're looking at their development options for this particular piece of property. It is a relatively square piece of property. And so they're trying to figure out how to get some mixed residential housing stock on this piece of property. So in your packet, in your memo, is this kind of a preliminary, very preliminary plat map. And it identifies the request as a private road within an easement to service these eight lots. The easement, the easement area would be maintained by a homeowners association. The private road would have to meet the private road standards that are in Title 10, Chapter 3, which allows for private roads to be either in tracts or in easements. We have them in both throughout the city, they have both directions. It is a square piece of property and this is an infill piece of property, it's developed pretty much all the way around it. And so it is this odd square shaped piece of property. And it's a townhome construction based on the townhome design standards that were approved with Title 11 co-changes. Ken Doris is in the audience, I think Mike Fitzgerald is on the go-to call as well. If you have questions for them specifically, Mike Fitzgerald is the engineer. So the City Council may approve, approve with conditions or deny the request for a private street.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Go ahead.
Donna, even though it's a private street, is there a place for snow storage?
There is. Private streets do require the same snow storage kind of requirements that you have for public streets. So it either goes into the grassy swales if those exist, or they have to provide snow storage as part of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Sewer easements, where there's a private street or whatever, does the sewer run in the backyards or does it run in the road?
It generally runs in the road if it's a mainline extension. Or if it's individual, I don't know what they've been looking at. We haven't really looked at the whole subdivision plan, so if it's a mainline extension, mainline extensions would run in sewer easements to the city. And we have had that in the past. If they can do four stubs back there from Orchard, then they would be service stubs that would be servicing them and we wouldn't generally need an easement. Alan, can you verify that fact?
Our current policy that we've adopted since the first of the year would require that any public sewer, which would be a sewer main, would be in a roadway, whether a roadway tract, unless there's extenuating circumstances, it wouldn't allow that, it would be the only time we allowed an easement. So in this situation, it would need to be in that roadway tract or easement as it's drawn there today. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just the only question I'd have is if it ever needed any maintenance, if they paved the road or something like that, I mean, who's responsible for tearing up the road to fix the sewer line?
If we needed to get our sewer in that track, we would repair the road just like we would any other public roadway. Even though it's private, it's built to public standards. And so, and that's the reason for putting it in a tract. And so, and that's the reason for putting it in a tract.
Okay. Matt, you have any? Donna, is this going to be a paved road?
All roads have to be paved roads.
Okay, I just, I actually knew that, but I wanted you to say it.
Yep, all roads have to be paved roads.
I covered myself okay.
Oh, you did good.
Yeah. Well, I, maybe I've been here too long then because I remember when you didn't always have to have a paved road.
That's a correct sentence.
Yeah.
Very true.
All right. Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you Donna. Any questions for the developer, for the road builder, whatever we're going to call them? Okay. All right Abby, or I guess we need a motion. To approve or not to approve.
I would make the motion to approve the request for a private street.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Council President Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
And councilmember Deling?
Yes.
All right. Action item E, amend bluegrass Armstrong annexation agreement PZE dash 21 dash 0095.
Is that the right one? Yeah, actually I'm just going to kind of introduce it because I think that the applicant has some slides as well. So, let's see. So the applicant for this one is Viking Construction. That's the parcel number. It's south of Hayden Avenue and it's about a half mile east of Hutter. This property size is almost 80 acres and their request is to amend the annexation agreement by removing 7.7, which discusses a condition to limit the density on the property. And I just wanted to point out that this is not a zone change or a subdivision request. It is an amendment to an annexation agreement. So here's the location. And that is the request to remove 7.7. And that's where it says the density of no greater than four units per gross acre. Is that a good spot to leave you Ray?
Sure.
Okay. Let's see. Here we go. I think that's what you need.
Thank you. Good evening, council president and council. My name is Ray Kimball. I've been here probably more times than I can count now. I'm an engineer for Whipple Consulting Engineers. I've been doing land development engineering for the better part of 21 years now. About a week ago, when I was planning my presentation for this, I was just going to say staff report in our, and our letter for request pretty much stands on its own. But in the last week or so, it's come to our attention that there's, there's been a little bit of, a little bit of public chatter about it. And so, and I'm sure you're aware of that. So I wanted to at least talk a little bit about why we're doing this and, and what we're asking for, maybe just explain a little bit better. As, as a city council, you're very well aware of the process that you've been going through in the last year and a half with the imagine Hayden and it's been a very in-depth process. I think a lot of the public doesn't really know about that. There's been a lot of opportunities for them to know about it, but for whatever reasons, everyone has their own. They, they haven't really been involved. So the property that we're talking about, this request is, is right here. So this is Hayden Avenue. This is Hutter Road and this is Atlas. So it's this 80 acre parcel right here. So the existing zoning to get us where we are, so we are this parcel right here. It's mostly yellow, which is single family residential. That's the existing zoning. And then there's this little 300 foot strip, wide strip of commercial across the front. That's where those apartments are being constructed today, based on a special use permit that was approved about a year, year and a half ago or so. So this is the future land use map in the area for the recently adopted comprehensive plan. And to kind of give us an idea of where we are here, is this little purple rectangle and then this little orange rectangle and this yellow square. So this is the future land use map. Now, it's important to probably for everyone here, I know you as a city council know this, but you know, in order to, it feels probably important to educate the public about this little bit, so that they know.
Ray, excuse me. Sorry to interrupt. Would anybody online that's not muted, please mute? We're getting a lot of feedback here and it's tough to follow the conversation. So, thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Thanks.
She didn't make them, but she knows you love rainbow.
So maybe I shouldn't have said anything.
Of course. Are adorable. I am a stove.
So, get back to that. Somebody loves rainbows. So the comprehensive plan is, is really the foundation for pretty much all land use decisions that cities go through in the state of Idaho. It's required by the Idaho State Land Use Act. And it's, like I said, it's really the foundation for all land use decisions. The last comprehensive plan prior to the current one was adopted in 2008. That set forth a vision for the city for a 10 to 20 year period. And this one, which the process started about a year and a half, almost two years ago, that process is, was and has been a monumental process undertaken by city staff and city consultants. You've all been through probably countless public hearings and workshops and just going through all of the parts and pieces and, and it's been a very, very involved process. There's been, there's been a lot of community outreach. And we talk about the purpose and the scope of, you know, what's in this comprehensive plan? What is in the vision for the city of Hayden? And we can go through and talk about all of it, but you know, it's, it's a long document, big. Most people just go to the map, look at the colors of the map. But there's a whole lot more to it than that. And I've been doing, like I said, I've been in land use stuff for probably, well, 21 years now. And I learn something every day that I work in this. And I understand that the general public may not have, guaranteed doesn't have the education in it that I do. And it can be confusing and I get that. And I have, and, and that's why I'm talking about it here tonight, because it's not something, these decisions that you make are not done in a vacuum. You have requirements by state code, you have requirements by city code. And even, even further up the chain, there's constitutional law that governs a lot of land use stuff. I know Caitlin knows all the Nolan versus the California Coastal Commission decisions and Dolan versus City of Tiger and all that stuff. And those are landmark Supreme Court decisions that, that weigh heavily in land use. And so that's one of the reasons why we have Idaho Land Use Act and we follow the codes. And as you saw earlier tonight, there are, there are criteria for approval and all those criteria have to be met. And one of those criteria is always adherence to the comprehensive plan. And so, like I said, that comprehensive plan was not created or done in a vacuum. It wasn't just you guys sitting around a table with a bunch of ne'er do wells deciding what, you know, what's going to happen in the city of Hayden for the last, or for the next 20 years. It, it's a long process that includes transportation master planning, it includes sewer master planning, parks master planning, the, you know, planning for how is the city going to grow if it grows? So what is that foundation? What is that blueprint? And so really, that is, that, that's the thing that happened. And as we look, there's outreach that happened in summer, kicked off in 2019. There were stakeholder interviews, Hayden Days outreach, community surveys. Some of those surveys were via Facebook. So there's social media interactions, there's chamber presentations, fall community festival and, and so out and so on. Not only that, but it was, it went through the planning process, went to public hearing from the planning commission and city council. And then, so that was adopted, I think, was it December, something like that, right in there? And then this follow-up is the city is now, and last meeting I think it was, adopted new zoning regulations that go part and parcel with this, so with the comprehensive plan. And so there's all these things, I can go through it more, but it's not, I'm beating a dead horse here. So the fact is, is that the comprehensive plan is really the blueprint for what the city uses to grow. So how's it grow? Does it grow outwards? Does it say, does the comprehensive plan include a whole bunch of areas out and gobble up the prairie? Or does it grow inwards and utilize the land that's already in the city to accommodate the housing needs? And so as you can see here, there is a future land use map and the zoning map, the current zoning map, side by side. And so this purple area here is mixed commercial, this orange area here is mixed residential and this is the standard single family residential. So that corresponds, that orange, or that yellow square corresponds with this square right here. And the orange would be the south half of this and the purple would be the north half. And so what we're asking for tonight, really, it's not a zone change, it's not a subdivision approval. Really what it is, it's just a little bit of a housekeeping item that brings the annexation agreement from the vision that the city had in 2008 up to the current vision that we have for the city of Hayden. And so really that's what we're asking. It's fairly simple, fairly straightforward. I understand that the public, there's a lot of public input on this. It's a shame that, that public input wasn't, wasn't there during the comprehensive plan hearings. It really is. But I think because the city has worked so hard, city staff has worked hard, the city has expended a lot of money with consultants, a lot of time, a lot of resources to make this comprehensive plan what it is today. Transportation studies, sewer studies, park studies, planning studies, all of this. Taking that into account, this is what we're asking for tonight, is just a little bit of a housekeeping item. Gets rid of a density restriction, doesn't do a zone change. And there's a really, I guess, one last point that I'd like to bring up. And this is, probably should have brought it up a little bit earlier. But the change from the zoning map here and the comprehensive plan, so the, the previous comprehensive plan had lower density, one to five units per acre, and the new comprehensive plan has this. That was not a request by the landowner. That wasn't the landowner saying, hey, I want this thing, I want this comprehensive plan changed. That was a product of the public process that happened. It wasn't a, a special request by the landowner. It was just a resultant of the product. And so as we move forward as a landowner, we've got this little wrinkle in the way of this, this annexation agreement, density restriction. And so in order for us to move forward with the city's comprehensive plan and develop inward instead of outward, we're asking for this amendment to the annexation agreement. And that's really all I have. I'll probably get this presentation again if you'd like me to, but for the next one, but it's really, it's just the same thing. If you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? You're ready?
Well, I have some questions first.
Please do.
That pertain to Mr. Whipple?
Ray Kimball.
Oh, I'm sorry. But it's Whipple Engineering?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you tell me, can the city deviate from its comprehensive plan?
I would have to defer that question to your attorney.
Well, you said you have 21 years of planning. In your experience, have you ever seen a city deviate from their comprehensive plan? Or is it, another way to word it is, is a comprehensive plan cast in concrete? You got to do exactly as it says.
So I'll, I'll tell you my experience with comprehensive plans and specifically in the city of Hayden. So we did a, there was a comprehensive, we had to come in for the Carrington Meadows subdivision. The comprehensive plan had a, a line drawn through the property that didn't meet with what we were hoping to do. And so instead of, so we would not have been able to do what we wanted to do without coming to the city and asking for a comprehensive plan amendment. So we had to do a comprehensive plan change, a map change. And that was part of the process for us to move forward with developing that subdivision as that. Now, a city, as a city council, and I'm sure your, your city attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, has the ability to change the comprehensive plan as necessary. There's a process for it, public process. And that's.
Yeah, that's not my question. Do we have the ability to change it? My question is, do we have to adhere to precisely the comprehensive plan or as a city, can we deviate from it?
My understanding is that it is a guiding document. It's not a, it's not a code thing. It, it's a, it's a guiding document.
It's a guiding tool is how we refer to it.
Sure. A foundation. So every land use decision has to be based in the comprehensive plan.
So we can't as a city deviate from the comprehensive plan?
Not putting Mr., having to have Mr. Kimball practice law without a license that he doesn't have. So saving you from that question.
But he has all these years of experience.
I know, but you're.
Have you ever seen it? Or do, does everybody follow exactly as the comprehensive plan states? I'd just like to know, because you said you're more educated than we are. Can I like to know?
No, okay. My experience, that question is best left to the attorneys.
Okay, next question. Did, did the owner of the property receive a letter from the city with the title of notice of zone change?
I don't know.
Do you know anything about this?
Yes.
What can you tell me?
I know that the city has initiated a, a zone change, a citywide zone change.
Correct. So what is it, what is it that your property is currently zoned as?
It is zoned, this particular one is, is commercial and. It is zoned, this particular one is, is commercial and single-family residential.
But the majority is...
Single-family residential.
Which allows, under the agreement, original annexation agreement, four houses per acre? Is that correct?
Yes.
So then...
Zoning is the zoning.
So then, you're going to have to have a zone change, and my question is, because there's a whole bunch of people in this city that received, 1,800 of them, that were in this, this zone change process, that received this letter, and the question is, do you want to stay in your current zoning, or do you want to make a change? So, my question is, did your, did your client get one of these?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't.
And yet, you're asking us to make a change to your annexation agreement, and you don't know?
I don't know if he received one. I'm sorry, I can't tell you that I know that he did. I don't know.
Did we send Viking one? Does anybody know?
I would assume that we did, because we sent down to, you know, anybody that could make a change on the...
Correct. So then, really, because he said the city was driving this zone change, but he, but apparently, he has a decision to make. He could have stayed in the current zoning, but he's choosing to change the zoning. So, it's really not us driving, it's your decision. So then, the other question I have is, based on this zoning change that you'll most, you're going to be asking for, I'm assuming with the P and Z, does it increase the density of housing on your property? Yes or no?
Yes.
By how much?
I don't know.
And you're the expert in this, and you don't know?
Not prepared to answer the question.
Well, I'm not prepared to answer the question either, if you don't know.
Okay.
That's all I have. Jerry, do you have any questions?
Maybe later.
Okay. Can you undo this one?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'll move on with the staff presentation. So, Ray kind of went through some of this, but in, the history is that in the 2008 comprehensive plan, it showed this area as a little bit of commercial at the top, and then, low-density residential. So, that is one to five units an acre. And then, we went through, I mean, and Ray talked about this as well, we went through Imagine Hayden, and we did not develop it in a bubble. I mean, we reached out, we had a consultant that was, we had consultants for each of the plans, but then we also had a consultant whose job was the public involvement, component of it. And so, it was widely out there. So much that we put flyers and grocery bags at Super One, like literally, how can we reach people? You know, so, anyway, this was from the community festival that was really well-attended at Atlas Elementary, and we asked people, if we had mixed use or multifamily, where would they like to see that type of development? And you can see that there's quite a cluster over here off of Hayden and Hutter there. So, that, I just wanted to point out, this is from the survey that went out, kind of right after the community festival, and we advertised that during the community festival. And, you know, 87% of people were concerned about the rising house, cost of housing. I don't think that's, it's probably, this was in 2019, so I'm sure people are more concerned even now. And then, we asked, like, about, you know, different types of housing and what was needed. And we recognized that, that single-family is still kind of predominantly what's needed, but there were people in the community that took the survey that were saying, I would really like to see some two- and three-family options, duplexes and triplexes, some smaller lot size, single-family, and some townhomes, cottage homes, or condos. So, from this feedback, we worked on, you know, the different components of the comprehensive plan, because, like Ray said, it's more than just the future land use, though people kind of go and grab that. So, this, this is the future land use map. This was developed through several workshops with planning and zoning and council. We had some different iterations, and we, and we tweaked some of that. After our first meeting with planning and zoning and council, it was a workshop with big tables, and those are public, those are public, we got some direction that we needed a little bit more mixed residential, so we added some more in. So, we're still, if the city, this is like a 20-year vision, right? So, if the city were to develop in accordance with this future land use map, our biggest land use is still that single-family residential, which is, has a minimum lot size of 8,250 square feet. Another thing that we heard from the community was, we wanted to protect the single-family home neighborhoods, and so, people wanted us to take the ability to have duplexes out of R1. So, we, so we listened and we did that. So, it used to be that you could come in and get a special use permit to, you know, apply for a duplex in R1. That option's no longer available, but instead, we've developed a different land use called mixed residential that allows for those different types of uses. So, I just wanted people to see, we zoom in on this, on this one area where the request is, but I wanted people to see that just kind of, you know, citywide, we're still a lot of yellow out there, which is that R1 zone, land use. So, this is the property for this request. It's a mixture of single-family residential, mixed residential, and mixed use, and I've included the descriptions there. One thing I wanted to point out, that the intent of mixed use, kind of citywide, is to allow for both residential multifamily and/or commercial uses. And we're not really saying that you, that you have to have a mixture on each property, but the point is that it's not going to be apartments citywide in this purple. It is going to be a mixture. The whole, I guess, concept behind that type of a land use is that people who reside in an apartment, if they could walk to restaurants and services and, you know, potentially have transit and that type of thing, that that would be a good situation for them. That would be a, you know, a good situation for that type of use. And same with mixed residential. You know, people living, living in, on a smaller lot, that that would be, that that would be a good use. So, still, you know, half of this is that single-family residential. So, we have lots of goals and policies and actions in the comprehensive plan that kind of deal with exactly this. And so, Goal Three is to maintain an attractive and balanced mix of land uses, densities, and housing types to ensure the future character of the community and promote greater choices and opportunities. And I don't know about other staff, but when I was at the community festival, I kept hearing from people that, we need another option, because my kid, that just graduated from college, they can afford to buy a house. So, is there any way to have another option for them? So, that's how we developed this mixed residential land use. So, then, Goal Seven is provide a balance of commercial uses in designated areas throughout the community centered around established transportation corridors while protecting the character of adjacent land uses. Goal 16 is ensure that ordinances and policies do not violate private property rights and adversely impact property values or create unnecessary limitations on land use. So, Policy 12 is to encourage rezoning and zoning text amendments to support the creation of strategic nodes, higher-density development, and transition zones between residential and industrial uses. Policy 23, to ensure land use and zoning compatibility related to development, density, and type, especially occurring in close proximity to the Coeur d'Alene Airport. And then, Action One, the very first action in our, in our comprehensive plan, is to initiate zoning text amendments and update the zoning map accordingly to address density transition areas and notes. So, that's, you know, one step that we're in right now, doesn't really have anything to do with this, but we're in that. And then, Action Two, encourage the development of low and moderate-income housing in places close to services and easily served by transit. So, I just wanted to kind of point all of those out. Affordable housing is just a crazy thing right now. I understand that. I understand there's a lot of public passion behind it. So, what was our response to affordable housing in the comp plan? Well, it was to develop mixed residential and mixed-use land uses and zones. So, that allows for this missing middle housing, which is smaller, single-family homes, twin homes, townhomes, cottages, et cetera. This is something that someone could get into to just gain entry into the ownership instead of rental market. And it also is not just people who can't afford it. There's also a lot of people who desire that type of living, people who don't want a yard to maintain, some older people, or people that love to travel. So, we heard a lot from people that just, you know, and it's still, if you go back, a small part of the whole city, but we're, you know, dipping our big toe into that type of housing. Okay, I wanted to also point out, because there were some, some questions on social media over the weekend, like, that kind of made it sound like maybe we hadn't planned for this type of, type of thing. So, the transportation plan was done as a part of Imagine Hayden. The property is right here in an area, and this is our ped bike map in the, in the transportation plan. So, there were some questions online as to, well, how are people going to be able to walk or bike or whatever from this development? So, I wanted to point out that we have separated paths on Hayden Avenue planned along, this is Carrington, as well as sidewalks, and we have bike lanes and sidewalks along this baggage road, and then we have these other streets that are also planned. And within the, if this were to move forward to a subdivision, right, that's not what we're doing tonight, but everyone's making the assumption that we may be there at some point. You know, the developers build this infrastructure. They build infrastructure internal or on the perimeter of their property. So, I wanted to point that out. Let's see. This is just kind of showing what types of roadways are planned in different areas of the city. Again, we're right here, you've got that baggage road, that's planned to be a three-lane road without bike lanes, or two lanes with bike lanes. I think we're going with the two lanes with bike lanes option, but that may change over time. Hayden Avenue in this stretch is planned to be a five-lane section, so two lanes in each direction, because we're so close to Hutter, and because the transportation modeling that we did supported needing five lanes in this location. There was also another comment, like, if people are living potentially in apartments in this area, or in like townhomes with small yards, small backyards, where would the kids play? Like, what would they, what opportunities would they have? Well, that was a good question, because we also addressed that in our park plan as a part of Imagine Hayden. So, the property is right here, and we have planned for a regional park in that, in this location. There's another park planned just north of Hayden. We're thinking it's going to end up over in this location, and then, as you cross Hutter and get into areas that aren't even annexed, there's another two parks planned out there. The sewer plan that was done as a part of Imagine Hayden, it has, it used the assumptions of the land use in the comprehensive plan to determine what was needed for our sewer infrastructure. So, that has been taken care of. There is, there is, let me show you on this one. There is a lift station, you can't see it because my box covers it up, that, the H7 lift station is right here, kind of up off of Hayden Avenue, and it, there is a project identified, because that was put in with the, the assumptions of the old comprehensive plan. So, it was, it was constructed before we had this document. So, we looked at, okay, now that we have a different vision for out here, what would need to happen to upgrade that lift station over time? And there's a, like a $500,000 pump upgrade that needs to happen at some point. The rest of the property is in the H8 sewer basin that hasn't been built yet. So, there were, I just wanted to kind of go over a few misconceptions, that there was, there was some stuff that developers don't have to pay for growth, that, that the thought of development paying for development is, you know, never happens. So, I just wanted to address what, what is true. They do, they pay impact fees in the city of Hayden, which is for transportation and parks, and as came up earlier in the meeting, we are, because we've just completed Imagine Hayden, now we're ready to launch into an impact fee study update. We can't raise our fees until we go through that process. That is required in state code. So, we're doing that. So, they also pay sewer cap fees, which is a little over $5,000 per dwelling unit in the city of Hayden right now, for just the collection portion that comes to the city. And they, as I just mentioned, pay to build all roadways, utilities, and upgrade city streets on their frontage. And this area, okay, so this, so I had, I saw, you know, one comment, this was in multiple places over the weekend. I saw a comment from someone who said, the area by the freeway, by the proposed Hutter freeway, it should be like Riverstone with a variety of uses and housing types. And I was like, yeah, that's like exactly what we envisioned for this area. So, that was something where she, this person, thought that she was commenting, like, that, that wasn't the vision, but in fact, that is. So, mixed use and mixed residential should only be, sorry, I kind of messed that up, be near the city core. And that's not necessarily true either. That's because these types of uses belong in areas along major transportation corridors. This is going to be a freeway. So, this is a good location to get people kind of in and out of the city without clogging up the rest of the streets. Okay, I saw another thing that the sense was that Hayden is building apartments left and right, I guess was the comment. So, I kind of listed how many we've had per year for the last few years, and in the last five years, we've only had 280 dwelling units of multifamily. Like, if you look at any of the other cities, that's a very small number. So, I know, we get kind of blended in with what's happening maybe in Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene, but for Hayden, that's just simply not true. So, the options for council are to approve this annexation agreement amendment request, approve with other conditions, or just not approve it. And I can put up any of the slides that you would like, or answer any questions.
Any questions?
No more.
Yeah.
Not me.
Unless Jerry, do you want to go? Go ahead.
That'd be great.
Approve with other conditions. So, that could mean that we could put density limits on the mixed use and the mixed residential?
I don't know why you couldn't. What do you think?
Well, we have in our...
That wasn't our request.
Right. I'm just thinking of in our, if they were to go forward with the zone change, because that's the, it's a kind of, you're thinking about it as a two-part process, because lifting the density on the annexation agreement in R1, they still have the 8,250 square foot minimum lot size, right? So, it doesn't really do anything, because they have, they always have the floor of the minimum lot size, so they can't, you know, build more into that. So, no, that doesn't really change. We only ever see people in R1, generally. We only ever see people in R1 generally build four units to an acre, just because it's really hard to deal with roads and every other improvement you need to put in there with Hayden's large lot size. So assuming you lifted that, and then, then they have the ability to go through a zone change, not even just in the city-initiated process, at some other time. I mean, they just, this developer and the landowner could wait years before wanting to go through a zone change, but they have the option to go through a zone change request. In our code today, I, one of the uses is that mixed use is limited to 20 units an acre.
Right, so the, the thought behind mixed use is that it can be multifamily, commercial, or a combination of the two. And so we've written it in the code that you can't have 20 dwelling units, and then on top of that, have more commercial. So the intensity of the use could never exceed that. Yeah, so.
Right.
I think I skipped this slide by accident. If anyone wants me to go back to it. Like, again, this wasn't a zone change, but let's, let's just kind of assume that, because we, it's, it's really hard to kind of divide these two right now. There was something that said that there was a 500% increase in density. That wouldn't be possible, even at the, the greatest...
Can I say something before I go too far?
Yeah.
Can I make a small statement?
Do you want to right now?
Yeah, no, I, uh...
Okay.
Just listening to what you're talking about, and, and the densities and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And a little bit earlier in the evening, we talked about the light industrial and all the stuff that we build out there by the airport and places that won't be offended by, by putting housing in there and won't affect the use of the airport. In that light industrial area and other areas we have here, there's a lot of jobs, a lot of jobs for young people. One thing we're lacking in Hayden is a place for those people to live. Now, I, we have resisted, over the years, these multifamily high-rises condo-type buildings like they're going crazy with all over the county. We're not doing that. But we do have to provide someplace for our working people to live where they want to live, something that's affordable, if that's even real anymore. You know, I mean, I don't know how young people even get into a house, but we need to help when we can, and this is fairly painless. This is not, this is just helping do something that we have planned to do for the last 30 years, and that's provide housing for the people that work in the light industrial in the area and stuff like that. We've always wanted to do that.
Right.
So...
Right, so I did want to point out that really the greatest density you're looking at here is, is in a subdivision request, right? So we don't even know what they're proposing on the property. Would be an average of about nine dwelling units an acre, which is nowhere near a 500% increase. And then, remember that a park's going on this property, and that the mixed use can be a combination of multifamily and commercial, and this isn't a subdivision, so we don't necessarily have those answers today. And then setbacks in minimum lot sizes are still required. But yeah, it is a, a density increase over the four units an acre that's in their annexation agreement, but it's also in line with the vision in the comprehensive plan. There was one other comment that I saw that was, that this was gonna be all four-story apartments, and that's also not true, because we only allow three stories as a maximum outside the central business district. Okay, sorry. I know this has been a really long night, so...
So, Jerry, back to your question, yeah, I think we would need to, in the annexation agreement, so there's a couple other amendments with it. I also think, subsequent to this, if it was changed and that was lifted, we also, with annexations, as you know, adopted annexation ordinance. The city historically puts that density limitation in the annexation ordinance, so we would just need to check it to make sure, and then have a new ord, you know, because that, that's gonna be an ordinance change, we only can change ordinance by ordinances. So that would be another, you know, process. We had ordinances on the agenda tonight similar to that. We would need to specify in the annexation agreement that, should they go through a zone change, what the density limitations would be. Because as you know, they were annexed, you, we zone upon annexation, so they're zoned residential. So the annexation agreement, you know, discusses that being the zoning, so should they want to change zoning, which I think we can specify, and they have the ability to seek a zone change request. You know, they always can, they're entitled to, always entitled to a process, maybe not necessarily the, you know, the outcome they want, but everybody's entitled to the process. So I would say in the annexation, if that is something council's contemplating to, we need to specify that, should we change that, that, that language would need to be amended to that it would be, you know, lifted, but should the applicant change, go through a zone amendment to either mixed use or mixed residential, or both, what a density limitation on the whole would be.
Any other questions, Jerry? Hey, Matt?
Yeah, I got one. I gotta, I gotta see if I can pull this one out. We've been here almost five hours, it's like, ah, sorry, thank you, everybody, for sitting here, but, okay, so in our workshop, Melissa, she gave, we had about a half an hour discussion on this notice of zone change. And part of the process, apparently the city has a spreadsheet, correct me if I'm wrong, about contacts, either when people send their slip back and say, "I want to stay current," or "I want to change my zoning," that's allowable. And you, you kind of know where people are. Have you received any communication from Viking regarding this property on what zoning they want to be?
I don't know. Have you, Donna? So I, there's other staff that are maintaining that spreadsheet, so I haven't had an opportunity to look at it today.
So, we don't know what they're thinking, in other words, about what they want.
And it, and this could be, I, I don't know either, but just this could be an option of lifting it, like I said, because they still have the minimum lot size in R1. Nobody can get around that, so you only can develop to probably four units max an acre anyway. I think our average is less than that even, I think it's, you know...
It's really more like three.
Three, yeah.
As an average.
And even if not at, you know, the city initiated, at some point could seek a zone change, this is probably just, if they do that, then they would...
Right.
I, I don't know the thinking, I'm just trying to talk through the process of, one thing I would anticipate, they, they currently are zoned R1, so to amend that, they would need to go through a zone map amendment.
Okay, so then, in application, my, my bottom-line question is this, is tonight we're going to vote whether or not to maintain the four units per acre as the original agreement, we either, or that we can say we can amend it. Now, if we say no to that, it's done, meaning they can't go to P and Z and ask for a zoning change. Is that true, false?
No, I think they can go and ask for a zone change. This is just the, their annexation agreement on the density limit in, in R1. I mean, they have the ability, this isn't zoning tonight.
This isn't zoning.
Just their annexation.
No, no, that's not my question, is, is, does this in any way impede their ability, based on this vote that we take tonight, does it impede on their ability to go before P, does it have any meaning? I mean, if it doesn't have any effect, why are we doing this?
Well, so I think they're, they still have the, the density limitation in their annexation agreement, and so that's something that they would want to, to know whether or not the council is open or not to...
So if they go and ask for a zone change, or they mean, do they have to be, even if they get a zone change, or they, do they have to uphold to the original agreement of four units per acre?
Right.
Right.
So if we vote four units per acre, it's only gonna be four units for, per acre?
Right, and they won't...
Period.
Right, and they won't be able to build mixed residential or mixed use.
All right, Donna, is what, what...
So, I think you guys are mixing apples, Nora.
Yeah, probably.
So, you, you're thinking that they're entitled to four units per acre, and each of those lots is a quarter acre lot?
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying...
That's what you're thinking, I'm asking. So, if, if that's what you're thinking, at four units per acre, and every one of those lots is a quarter of an acre, that's wrong. Because in R1, a minimum lot size is 0.189, plus your minus, I think that's right, acres per lot, that's how you get to that 8,250 minimum lot size. So four units per acre as a cap is based on land density, but if they come in for a zone map amendment to mixed use or mixed residential in R1, then the minimum lot sizes for a part of those lots, they would have to meet those minimum lot sizes of that underlying zone. Their dwellings would still meet the density requirements, but that doesn't mean the lot sizes are bigger. The only reason I clarify that is because of your previous statement with the Marx Ranch, you called out, I like this subdivision, because of the larger lot sizes. So a zone map amendment would allow them, afford them the ability to have different lot sizes than minimum R1 lot size.
Okay, so let's go back, because it's late. Bear with me.
I'm not trying to bet you the water.
We have an agreement in 2013, when the annexation agreement and the city council heard it, I, I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know, but it said, you know, you can build in this, these properties, it will annex you, but you're gonna have four lots per acre. My, my question is, if we vote to maintain that, can they go to this planning and zoning and get eight or 10 units per acre? Are they still bound by that four?
Right, they still would have to amend their annexation agreement. That runs with the land.
Yep.
No matter what the zone changes to.
So, so if we decide as a council, four per acre, we can do that tonight, and that'll carry through what they have, they can do for the future on that property, only four per acre.
You're correct. I'm not exactly sure where you're going with it, but you're correct in that statement.
I'm trying to understand the effect of our vote.
You're correct in that statement, but I guess what that would then probably do is not result in the vision in the comprehensive plan, because...
Which we don't have to uphold, though.
So back to that, because I did want to talk about that, I did want to talk about that earlier, is, under Idaho Code 676511 in the Local Land Use Planning Act, it says that zoning shall be in accordance with your comprehensive plan. Now, the Supreme Court, the Idaho Supreme Court, has several cases on what "in accordance with" means, of course it does. So it's a fact-finding inquiry, though, for you as the council. Does it have to be as expressly stated and adopted every single time with whatever our comprehensive plan says? No, there are cases, there are, I'm telling you right now, there are cases that provide, no, of a, of a county or a city not upholding, when somebody has requested an upzone, which is what this would be, right, and, and different, higher-density use, that is called for in the future of your comprehensive plan, and it was denied at the time because it's, it's not, like, while that may be a future request, it's not envisioned for the time. So I'm just telling you that because I don't want to hide the ball, there, that's, that's absolutely a case for comprehensive plans, but it is one of things for you to consider. And if our, the bigger problem is if we have zone map amendment, you know, zone map amendment requests that are far left field from what our comprehensive plan is calling for, under the Local Land Use Pla, Planning Act, we're directed to amend our comprehensive plan to make an amendment to that plan before adopting a code, or, excuse me, a zone entirely in conflict with that. But it's a fact-finding inquiry for planning and zoning, and you to make when that application comes. So I just don't want to speak broadly that, you know, this should never be mixed residential, it should never be mixed use. I can't, I can't say that, that's something that will come for you, but I just want to tell you in somewhat general terms that I can, that, no, it's not something we should put on the shelf and ignore and never pay attention to, because we just spent, you know, we just adopted it, and our zoning is supposed to be in accordance with our comprehensive plan, it is one thing we look to. But also our goals and policies in our comprehensive plan would be one thing we would look to as well. So if those aren't in line, that's something else, I guess I would put back on the councils, that's something we need to be looking at changing again, because I just, I don't want test to make land, you know what I mean? The concern of making land use decisions, that's completely unsupported by the goals, not completely unsupported, but in some cases unsupported. There are some of those properties that are R1, they're near R1, you know, they could be...
So your legal opinion is, can we vote no?
I think there could be cases that come before you, that you could make the factual determination in a certain case, that maybe it wasn't supported...
In this case?
Well, this isn't a zoning case before you, so no, I can't opine on that.
No, the question is, is it legal, are we even taking a vote on this?
On amending an annexation...
Yes or no?
On amending an annexation agreement, yes.
So we can do this legally?
Yes, there's no problem with that request.
So we can vote no, and it's okay?
It's up to you, it's...
Well, no, legally, is that okay?
Yeah, it's up before you. I mean, that's, they haven't gone through the zone request yet, that would be a part two, it's still zoned R1. So I just, you know, the second part to that is them coming before you, and would it ever change into mixed use and mixed residential? But the question of it coming before you to assess tonight, that's what, you know, Mr. Kimball and staff is putting before you, this is what we've envisioned in the comprehensive plan. So if this is something we're wanting to start moving forward and seeing as a reality in Hayden, and getting support for that, this is what would need to be lifted in order to have that accommodated.
But again, it's still legal, we can vote no.
If you make the finding that you don't want, you're, I mean, that somehow this isn't in, in accordance with those plans. And that's the, I'm just trying to just have us discuss that, because this is, this is new, we just have gone through this plan, we've had comprehensive plans, but this one, this is fairly new. We went through an extensive planning process, we have goals and policies for this. I know it's late, I know we're ready to get out of here, it's a harder question I have to put back on you as the fact-finder, so is this something we're wanting soon for the city of Hayden, and we're wanting to move forward with, that we just went through the title change, you know, Title 11 changes to allow for this? This is what our comprehensive plan is stating, and if we have other requests, you know, zoning requests, there, this is one property, but not just the annexation amendment, there could be, there will be other properties maybe that wanted just to amend zones that have no annexation agreement, and is this the envision that we want to see for the city? That's, and that's a determination for you to make.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Jerry?
Caitlin, so could you sort of help me out as far as putting together, if I wanted to make a motion to put conditions, how would I go about that?
Well, I think it needs to state that, you know, so there's, it's more complicated, I think, just made by everything that's gone on, but also because there's a potential that they could request a zone change, but they haven't today. They are annexed and zoned R1. So the annexation agreement, it states that, it's, it's all considered to be single-family residential. I think there could be a condition that you amend the annexation agreement to say, should, you know, should the applicant pursue and receive a zone map, pursue would be granted a zone map amendment to, you know, mixed use or mixed residential, and then that certain density limits would be placed on that property. I'd have to have Melissa and Donna help, so mixed use, we have a 20-unit-per-acre limit today in the code.
Yeah, that's the, that's the maximum.
Yeah, that, so that's the maximum that you could have under mixed use.
And mixed residential is eight.
Is eight units per acre.
It's envisioned to be six to eight, you know, ish.
So the, the maximum for mixed residential is 20?
No, mixed use.
Mixed use is 20, but could that be changed to, say, nine or 10?
And we could also, Councilmember Link, we could also, you could table this tonight and take it up at another time, we could look at the density limits. I mean, I, I don't mean to say that you had to...
If you're proposing some, if you're proposing some different things, you may want to table it, so...
I, I will answer part of your question. So as a part of our Title 11 zone codes, we reached out to all sorts of land developers, not just ones in Hayden, all over the place. We looked at developments that were well-done and successful, and we interviewed them. Like, what does it take to have a successful development? And really, we were hearing that it's really like 20 to 25 units, dwelling units an acre to have a successful multifamily development. And so, because we're Hayden, and we don't want to be super dense, we went with the low end of all of those things. So all of the, the input that we received.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah, but what are you doing?
Okay, well, now I'm gonna ask, now I'm gonna ask for comments and deliberations out...
Well, now I'm going to ask, now I'm going to ask for comments and deliberations out on this, so, do you want to start, or you want...
Oh, whatever.
Okay.
Look, I, first of all, I'd like to say something to the audience, thank you for being here, some of this is painful, and it's emotional, and we all have feelings about it, and there's been some, let's just, I'm going to do this, I don't have enough time to say everything I'd like to say, and you don't want to hear it either, so, looking around today with what's going on in the country, it's pretty hard to figure out what the heck government is doing, and I know everybody, including me, I look at this stuff, and those people are nuts, but it doesn't make any sense. I hope you have learned something tonight, just from what I've seen, I've been involved with the city here for 35 years, maybe it's time to fire me and get some new blood, I don't know. But I'm 80 years old, you don't have to put up with me much longer anyway, so whatever. But I think you should have learned in this process of how great these people are that work here. They work really hard, they're honest, they stay here because they love where they work. That's why we do what we do. My family's been here a hundred-and-some years, I've lived here all my life, and some of the people that have been affected the most by growth and development are the people that have always wanted to live here and didn't want it to change, and I'm one of them.
Thank you.
What was that?
She said, "Thank you."
I didn't, I didn't hear it right, anyway, but the, but the point is, let's just imagine that all of us are going to use a little bit of common sense about some of this stuff, which is damn rare these days, okay? We do not have the right to tell people, or the legal right, or the moral right, or any kind of right, to tell people they can't move here, and I don't care whether you're red, yellow, green, black, white, or whatever color you are, you can't do that, I don't care what religion you are, or whatever. So, let's just, and we've had people say to us, we want to stop the growth. Which of you out here wants to tell people you don't want them to move here, or you don't want them to live here? Based on what? Because if we turn people down that come in here with those things, we have to say why. And if we turn down a subdivision or something like that, then we have to look at the reasons we turned them down, and help them get through the process and make it pass. It's a lot easier when you sit out, out in the streets, and you throw grenades over the wall and say, "Those idiots don't know what the hell they're doing," but the rules for us are a lot different than they are for you. We have state law that we have to abide by, we have local ordinances, and if the ordinances don't work, we could change them, you know? If we get the input from enough people that don't like it, we'll look at it, and we'll do whatever changes we can to make it work, but we do not ever have the, have the ability or the power to say, "You can't move here." And if, and I had a lady at a hearing in Ratham years ago, when I was county commissioner, and she wanted to stop the growth immediately, okay? The three commissioners were there, we were all Idaho natives, actually, at the time, and I said the same thing, basically, I just said, "Here, if we were going to stop the growth, which we can't do, we don't have, we don't want to, personally, that's not our job, and legally, we can't do it." When should we have done that? And I said, "Should we have done it 60 years ago?" I remember when people started moving in here 60 years ago, and the attitude that some of them, I didn't care for very much, it was completely different for us. The city of Hayden's only been a city since 1955, we started with nothing, no grants, no money, no nothing, and then we've done a pretty good job due to the people that work here and really care. But this lady said, "Well, we got to do something about it." I said, "Okay, say we wanted to stop it 60 years ago, or 40 years ago, or 20 years ago, or whatever." I said, "How long have you lived here?" And she said, "I've lived here three years." And I said, "Well, if we'd done it five years ago, we wouldn't be listening to you right now, would we?" So, let's be fair about this, you know, let's work together, threatening us with not electing us again, you can't get to me that way, trust me. You know, I, I think that, I've never made a decision in my life based on whether I would be elected again or not, but let's use a little common sense here. There's no reason why we can't work together on some of this, but we cannot ever tell people that we don't want to move in here because they're yellow, or because they're black, or because they're white, or I don't like their religion. Let's get real about this, that does not work. And so, we're trying to do the best thing that we can up here to make it fair for everybody. The property owners, I remember when the grass burning went away, all these fields out here, they were planting grass. What are the farmers that live here, and lived here their whole generations in that same ground, all of a sudden, they're out of work? They've got 1,500 acres out here on the prairie, thank you, that, that they can't use, and they can't make an income off of. So, what are they supposed to do? Pay taxes on it and shut up? No, we work for them too, we need to help, work together, and I think, all of what I'm talking about now starts right here, and goes clear up to Washington DC. Haven't we had enough of this garbage? We could take care of some of these things in a reasonable manner, and shake hands, and maybe we won't get our way, and maybe we will. Why don't we try to do that, for crying out loud? That's all we need to do. Thank you for putting up with me. Or maybe you didn't, I don't know.
Do you have anything to say, Matt?
Yeah, a couple things. And I just want to enter into the record, this cost of community service study that shows that every dollar that we collect for residential properties, we have to put out a dollar nine in services, so I'm going to give that to her clerk, and that's available to anybody, and it's specific to Cootney County, so it isn't someplace in Virginia. I have concerns about the Ratham Puri aquifer. We're going to put houses all the way across that? That's a water source for over 500,000 people, and granted, you can sewer it, but it's a stormwater issue, the cars, the fertilizers, the cleaners, and I know that there was a refueling station put out there, that we were sure it was safe, but it leaked. They put three, three protective layers of plastic or whatever, and it's still leaking through it, so...
Who says it's leaking? At first, I was one of the guys that voted for that, by the way.
You had the tie vote, right?
You damn right, and I watched them build it, and they've kept their word, what they said, so, don't be throwing that crap out unless you got approval.
Well, it's a friend of mine that I know...
Oh, what's his name?
Mike Clicker with KC Construction, he built the layers, and it leaked.
Yeah? Go find out, let's find out, I'd like to hear about that.
I know.
Oh, sure you do.
Because he went bankrupt.
Keep talking.
So, higher density, in my opinion, is bad. It costs us, our, it costs us in our, in our quality of life, it's costing us in traffic, I hate the traffic. I was late here today, and, and I'm not talking about stopping growth, I think we need to reassess and look at slowing it up, and have less dense, density in it. That's, that's where my problem that I have with it, and this smart growth, smart build program, its whole goal is to get increased density, I don't like it. I wish I knew more about it when we were going through that process, because it sounded good, "Well, let's, let's create housing, more affordable housing." Well, that sounds reasonable, but not when we stack so many houses on top of each other, that, right now, we have a problem with traffic, we can't fix now with the money we have. We only collect $1,600 in a impact fee for streets per lot, that goes nowhere when fixing the problem. We need to increase that impact fee, that's one of three that we can collect, to a high amount, so we can help mitigate the traffic problem. This is only adding, the higher density only adds more to the problem that we can't fix. So, why do we want to create more of a mess? We're just kicking the can down the road. Talking to people, they don't like the traffic, and I think everybody knows that, and this is a bad precedence, I, I've never seen this happen before, where someone's going to go to P&amp;Z and get a zoning change, because they'll have to go to P&amp;Z, but they come here first. Are we going to set this up, where people come to us and test the waters first, without a public hearing? Because you couldn't talk about it tonight. I don't like that process. I think the process should be, you go, you go to planning, zoning, with your, with your zoning request.
Well, they do, this isn't a zone request, so I just, I just want people to know that, this isn't changing their zoning, so even if you approved it tonight, they leave here This isn't, this is just a request to amend...
Right, but it can change the density.
Right, just as long as you meant density, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, because zoning does have to go to P&amp;Z.
Correct, so it could go to R1, four units per acre, it goes before the city, planning and zoning, and then they can change to a new density. No?
No.
Wait a minute, if they're zoned R1, what will they go into, then?
No, so, so...
With a new zoning?
So, tonight, so all the request is, is just to amend the annexation agreement.
I get that.
So, well, I don't know that we do, though, we're still all over the place here, so all this is, is to lift the density limit of four units an acre, so there's still R1 today, until they go through a zoning amendment, but today, there's still R1. So, unless, until they can go through a zone change, there's, but we haven't done that yet, is my point, that we haven't gone through that process, so they will, if it's approved, they still leave here R1. But the zoning amendment does occur at P&amp;Z.
But we know they want a higher density, point.
Yeah, and they may request it, yeah.
So, lastly, talking to people, and, you know, we're, we're, we represent the people, and the people that I've been talking to do not want higher density, and that's my position, I agree with that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jerry?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you folks for being here tonight, and I'm sorry that we couldn't allow everyone here, and I hope you understand the reasons for that, and as elected officials, we listen to everyone. I've always listened to everyone, I can't make everyone happy, but I take in all the information, and I try to make the best decision I can for the citizens of Hayden and the city itself, and sometimes people are happy about it, other times, they're not, but I always do my best, just like the other council members and the mayor. And I do want to thank you for being here tonight and being part of the process, it can be a long, tedious process, a lot of the times, but I applaud you for being here. And tonight, this is rather a difficult decision, I'm not quite sure what to, what to decide in this case. I do agree with a lot of what Councilmember Panabaker said, we can't, we can't keep people out, and people are going to be moving here, and we have to have, when people buy property, they have rights, they have rights to that property, and as an elected official, we also have to protect people's property rights, and there's, as Councilmember Panabaker said, there's city ordinances, state statutes, I mean, we, we have to follow all of the rules. And tonight, now I'm going to ask for clarification from Caitlin again, so if we, if we approve the request to, the annexation amendment...
To lift the density.
Then, the, it still is, it's going to be R1, four units per acre, unless they come and request a zone change, correct?
So, just to clarify, because, just for everybody else, so if you lift the density, it's still zoned R1, because we haven't gone through a zone change, and you still have to meet an 8,250 square-foot lot minimum, that doesn't change regardless, and so, they probably can only ever develop at four units an acre anyway, we actually see an average of less than that, by the time you put infrastructure and roads on a lot, so, it, it's not going to be, not just on a lot, but on property, you know, you have to, you have to build the infrastructure to support the development, and that, of course, takes down build a lot, buildable space, building space. So, if that density limit were lifted, and it maintains, it stays R1, they, you know, they still have to meet the 8,250 square-foot lot requirement, so that averages about four, four units an acre anyway, for...
Not in the other areas, not in the mixed-use?
Yeah, no, so that, but just, it's R1 today, so until, until, they haven't gone...
Unless it changes.
Yeah, so unless it changes, but it hasn't gone through that yet, so, so if it stays R1, it's still limited to the 8,250 square-foot lot requirement.
Well, we heard it's going to change.
Oh, I, I mean, it can.
I mean, we saw where the, so are they going to deviate from the comprehensive plan? It shows that those other zonings are allowed, and just stay R1?
They could choose to stay R1.
So, they're going to deviate from the comprehensive plan?
So, they either can request an amendment, or come in the city initiated, or stay, as we talked about in the workshop, we're not...
Right, but they'll deviate from the comprehensive plan.
I think his point is, the standard going back to the zoning would then be the new comprehensive plan.
Yeah, because they, they got a letter saying, well, we don't know, but we're hearing, yes, they do, that they got a letter saying, "What do you want to do?" And much, you know, so, I think it's pretty obvious, they want to, they, they're going to go to higher density than four, that's where they want to go, that's where they make their money.
Well, I would assume, I would assume that's the intent, I'm not them...
But you're making it sound like they can only go to four units per acre.
No, if they're R1.
Well, we know they're not going there.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, tonight's not the zoning, so I just, if they change the zone, and the density's lifted, they can go to a higher, if they can get a zone, if they do the zone change.
You have to ask him.
I put my hand up, I didn't know if I'd be recognized or not, I was going to ask a question, good.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Kimball wouldn't be here tonight asking for this, if they didn't need to clean something up in their process. By him asking for what he's asking for, they're going to end up with more, more density. Period end. That's how it's going to be. I don't disagree saying that you can't tell people they can't move here, what you can say is, we're going to do it methodically and sensibly. Right now, right now, the world is a cash cow, you look at it, I'm going to tell you this right straight up, I bought my house here three years ago for $373,000. A realtor would sell it tomorrow for $800,000. That's what the developer is looking for.
Okay, now it's my turn. What I'm going to say, my intent is not to upset or make any of you mad, that's not my purpose here, but I've lived here for almost 60 years. Had we shut the gates 60 years ago, I wouldn't be looking at most of you, and we wouldn't be addressing this problem. But time has gone by, it's gone by, we can't change a doggone thing, so, I got over it, you know? I liked growing up in Dalton Gardens and Hayden Lake, with nothing but cow pastures, and a house here, and a house there, and, you know, I can look at you folks and go, "You ruined my life." Okay, I'm not saying that, just like Dick said, I've been to many countries and many states, I wouldn't want to live there either, so that's why we're all here, it's a nice place to live, and we want to keep it a nice place. But I want to tell you, I am so proud of this council, all of our staff, and proud of them for one reason, they all give a damn, they aren't doing it for the money, they're not doing it because they're in a developer's back pocket, they're doing it because we all live here too, and the decisions made affect us too. I don't like sitting out here for how long, at Honeysuckle, where you have to sit for how long to get through the light, I don't like it either, but it is the way it is, we have so many different constraints on... different constraints on us. Please, keep in mind, we do care. We live here too. The lady who had comments tonight, you know, I just wanted to jump right in the middle of her. You know, lady, don't sit there and tell me that I don't care about this place and I'm not engaging the public and I'm not doing this and I'm not doing that. Do most of you folks realize what this council has done and been through? You know, we talked about moratoriums, building moratoriums. Well, yeah, we could go there. What would we get? We'd get sued. Well, guess who pays for the lawsuit? You folks. It's your money. Just like when we got sued over the sewer fees. Guess who pays for that? It was a frivolous lawsuit. Nobody won, but you as taxpayers get to pay a million dollars in legal fees. Isn't that nice? Okay. Impact fees. You know, I agree with Matt. I'd like to see them raised. Growth does need to pay for itself. I doubt it ever will, but we can work on trying to make it pay for itself as much as possible. But, you know, we've talked about, let's have an impact fee for schools. So when somebody buys a new house, $1,000 goes towards building new schools. Sorry, can't do it. The farmers here who, like I said, growing up here, the prairie was all farms. Okay, a lot of those farmers, please keep in mind, that's their retirement. Yeah, there's some big farmers out there, but there's a lot of little farmers too. That's their retirement. That's their land because they couldn't afford to put aside pension money and stuff. I'm lucky, I got a pension. They don't. So it's a property rights issue too. So you say, "Well, okay, this higher density, the developer is going to be ahead on the whole deal." Yeah, they will be. But also keep in mind, that developer wouldn't have bought that property from that farmer who was trying to come up with a retirement if the price was too much or they couldn't make it profitable. What I'm trying to say to everybody is, there are so many complex issues and so many directions that we have to consider. This question tonight about higher density is simply not a yes or no question. I don't care how you put it. It's just not that simple. We have the lowest tax levy of any city our size in Idaho. One of the reasons, another reason I'm proud of this council and our staff, we've worked our tails off to try to do the best with your folks' money and my money because I pay the same taxes as you do. We're trying to be responsible here. And when people accuse us of being irresponsible in the back pockets of developers and not doing the right thing, you know, I'm starting to get angry at these folks. I used to take it, but I'm starting to get angry because I know everybody in this room doesn't think that way. So again, I'm sorry, I'm starting to kind of rant and rave a little bit, but, you know, we're trying to do the right thing. Do we always do the right thing? No. No, because we're human, just like you folks are. We all make mistakes. You know, we had people who came to these meetings and said, "You know what? Our kids can't afford Hayden anymore." My, well, I won't go into my family. My family got a big break. That's why my son's able to live here. But so we took a look at it. Okay, how do you get affordable housing for our kids? Well, unfortunately, higher density is one of the ways you do that because now you're going to put more living on less land. But it makes it affordable. We took a look at that and said, "Is that a way we can help?" Because we're hearing from everybody. We can't afford houses here. Well, we're trying to solve that problem too. We're trying to solve the density problem. We're trying to solve the traffic problem. You know what? It isn't just density. There's a lot of factors involved here. So I will shut up now. Thank you for putting up with me. And I would make the suggestion to the rest of the council that, "Council, we approved this comp plan. If we're not going to follow the comp plan, then I suggest that we table this and the next meeting." I haven't asked if we can do that, but--
Well, no--
We table both of them until we come to the, to, "Are we going to follow this comp plan or aren't we?"
And I think if there are other issues and we should address it, we've kind of touched on it previously with a previous annexation request, a smaller kind of an infill lot, if council recalls that. Like I said, it's fairly new, you know, our comp plan in total is. So if this is something of where there is concerns over it, I think we should just talk about that and know that. I think, I'm not saying they're not valid concerns. I just, staff is going in a direction that is directed by you in the comp plan. So if, and if that's the consensus, we just want, would like, I think they just need to know.
So I would make a motion to council that we table this and the next item until we do a workshop or something else and discuss it further.
Second.
Third.
Roll call, please.
Whoa, you guys go way ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you make that motion? So to table 5E and 5F?
Roger made the motion, and they kind of tied in a second.
Yeah, I made the motion, yeah.
Pick one of them. They kind of tied in a second.
We'll give Jerry in a second.
I thought Jerry had some kind of motion going because she asked for help.
Yeah, she didn't start with the motion, but Councilmember Delance started with, "If we were going to lift the density, but still have some conditions on it." And then that's why I kind of waded into--
So she never made a motion.
No.
But if she has some conditions, like towards density, putting some kind of other restriction on there, we were going to suggest to table it so that we understand what the ramifications are of the whole thing and not just, you know, put it out there. That's--
And for you too, so we can meet the staff.
Yeah, for you all, so we understand what you're doing.
So we have a motion in a second before us to table this matter and the next item.
So 5E and 5F, okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Panabaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Delance?
Yes.
And Council President Satterfield?
Yes. We're almost there, folks. And I've been here since 2:30, so I've gone six hours without a cigar. I'm starting to get cranky, so.
Brett.
I was just going to mention, there's a lot of information here, and I, you know, we've, staff on a level, I appreciate they've taken a lot of calls this last while trying to address the concerns. And I think, I mean, that's what we're here is to kind of hear that. I think part of what our plan was, we have a newsletter that's going out. There's lots of information here that we deal with all the time, like the impact fees and gross fees and how we're trying to make growth pay for itself. And so we're going to try and address some of that in our newsletter, put some blurb in there. Okay, here's how we're trying to have growth pay for itself. We also, you know, we're talking about whether or not, before COVID, we had talked about having some citizen academies where we have people come in and we just, you know, we have to spread out. So it hasn't worked. But we talked about maybe something online, giving some information about, more on the processes. And so if you have questions, because the public, you don't deal with land uses very often. You don't understand what, you know, a mixed use is or what these are. And so as people have questions--
You know, Brett--
We want to, we talked about earlier about, you know, another process that ties in with this. It's not this process tonight, of slowing down, you know, on the letters that went out that we were going to slow down and make sure we hear from everybody on that, make sure that we get that right. And if we have some changes that we need to make there, you know, to look at that.
And one thing I forgot, folks. Thank you all very much for showing up here tonight. I wish we would get the public to show up. You know, I worked for the county for 28 years, and in my 28 years, we had one gentleman that showed up for budget hearings. You know, the public needs to be engaged. We're in this all together. We're no different than you. We just sit in a different chair than you do. But we're all in this together. We got to work together if we're going to solve these problems. And we've spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars on this comp plan because based on what we were told at all these meetings, this is the direction you should go. So we have been. Well, now we're being told, hmm, maybe not. Okay, maybe not. Let's take a pause and look at it.
So if, yeah, if there are questions, like you want answered, other questions that you're hearing and stuff, let a member of the staff know, and we'll take that, and maybe we can address it in the newsletter so that goes out to everybody. And we maybe can have a future meeting on, you know, some educational things as well. So anyways, that's all. I know we're late, so.
All right. I have one thing to just to end on here for me. There was a, we had a discussion for half an hour at the workshop, and I had let Ed know that they were going to talk about this notice of zone change. And so Ed, I guess, let some other people know. And then Ed said that it was canceled. And so there's an interest in knowing the process of this zone change. And I talked to Caitlin about it, and it sounds like a good idea would be to have a town hall meeting on it. So that's what my proposal is, that we have a town hall because there's 1,800 property owners here. They're trying to figure out what to do. And I think we need to hear from you folks. And that's my thought. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We sure do.
This is my favorite part. Then we're adjourned.